Six o'clock, so welcome to our new time. But I'd like to call the Planning Commission to order today's Monday, August 30th. And first thing on our agenda would be the roll call. DeFranco.
Here.
Eileen.
Here.
Telmer.
Here.
Webster.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Israel.
Here.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. You are welcome to stand and participate in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you prefer not to, you are respectfully welcome to remain seated. My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, to its republic, which is in a nation under a individual liberty and justice. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda from any commissioners? Renee? If there are motion to approve these?
No.
Their support? Support from Eileen moved by. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from July 26th. Again, thank you, Daniel. You do a wonderful job with minutes and we appreciate it. And I guess it was a little challenging because I didn't know you didn't have audio.
Yes, okay.
So, um, let's go through the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections or changes to page one? Or page two? Page three? Page four? Page five? Page six? Page seven? Page eight? Page nine? Page 10? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as written?
No.
Second.
Moved by Webster, supported by Eileen. Again, thank you, Daniel. I never got when my minutes approved as written when I was. I just want you all to know that. There were always errors. I spelled everybody's name wrong. Anyway, thank you. Nice job. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments. The Planning Commission requests that you limit your public comments to three minutes. And, um, respect that time for individual comments. And if you're speaking for a group of people, please limit your time to five minutes. If you're going to be addressing any of the new business on the agenda, you can wait until those items come up, or you're welcome to address them now. Okay? So, um, the microphone is open. What we ask is if you are going to come up and address the board, please write your name and address up on that sheet of paper. And this is not a time for conversation and to ask us questions or anything, but it is our time to listen to you, but we probably won't respond. Okay? I'm sure we won't, so. Thank you. We're not, no, we won't be responding, but thank you. So is there anybody in row one that would like to address anything that's tonight? Or row two? Any comments in row three? Or row four? Okay, so we will close the public comment session of tonight's agenda. Moving on to new business number five. The first thing is on the agenda is a special approval use, public hearings, and consideration for Nick Capoletti from Cap Properties at 3279 Blue Star Highway for the special approval use of accessory apartments in the C2 district with a commercial use parcel number 20 dash 010 dash 036 dash 00. Renee, would you like to begin the discussion?
Sure.
Of introducing the project, please, or? Renee is our, our planning commissioner. Our, our planning commissioner, whatever.
Donnie Administrator.
Donnie Administrator.
Donnie Administrator.
Yeah.
Administrator.
Thank you. We have a request by Nick Capoletti for special approval use for accessory apartments with a business use. This is a special approval use in the C2 district. As you all know, special approval uses sometimes have specific standards, and they always have general standards. In this case, we, we have general standards for this use. We don't have specific standards. Note that the use is called accessory apartments. They're, they're different from accessory dwelling units, would say. So Mr. Capoletti is seeking approval for three accessory apartments at 3279 Blue Star. He did submit a site plan, which he modified and resubmitted, so I do want to clarify that the three units that he is proposing have a dimension of 34 by 16. The prior rendition had some different measurements on it, so I just want to clarify. In terms of our special land use standards, the first is whether the approved, the special approval use would be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner harmonious with the character of the area. We found that it may be compatible with the character of the area. Blue Star Highway has a mix of residential, motel, commercial, and light industrial uses. We have auto repair, we have self-storage buildings, we have motels, we have houses. So this is really a blend of both commercial and residential, accessory residential uses. Number two, will this special approval use change the character of the area? This is a tour based, tourist based area, caters to vacationers and others. We found that this use would not change the character of the area. What's unique is that to be accessory apartments for a business use, these apartments do need to relate to that business. So in this case, Mr. Capoletti has a studio. So his goal is to rent those apartments to artists who are showing in the studio. I was thinking about, say, a restaurant. If, if his use were to change and there'd be a restaurant, they would be able to rent to persons who are employed at the restaurant. If it's a hair salon, maybe a stylist would live there. So it does need to relate to that business use. So you'll see some standards that we're recommending that relate to that. Number three, will this special approval use be hazardous or involve uses, activities, materials, or equipment which might be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the community, or by reasons of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, humes, or glare? We found that it would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. We do think that there may be public comments that might feel otherwise, so I think it would be important for us to listen to that comment before finalizing any kind of decision or deliberation. And then number four, will the use place additional demands on public services or facilities? I think it is important that we talk about and consider how these units would be served with water and stuff, just to ensure that there, there is, um, a separate water service for each one of those buildings. This is something that we did with Big B, where we had a separate water service for the Big B building. They couldn't just connect through spectators. So, um, the township engineer provided their review, and they, they recommend that any consideration also include utility approval by the county health department, Cal Lake, and any others as necessary. So we just want to make sure that that's included as you deliberate. And then drainage. Again, this is just a special land use. Should this use be approved by the planning commission, we would want to see a detailed site plan. And in that detailed site plan, the engineer, the architect, the applicant would work through these drainage considerations, because there will be additional impervious surface. We, we thought through some potential conditions. Again, we don't have a definition for accessory apartments, so we're, we're really looking at this for the first time, kind of as a community. So I think it's important to kind of work through some of these details. But first, that there would be eventually a detailed site plan, that approval by the various reviewing bodies like the health department, Cal Lake, you know, Alleghen County Road Commission, if necessary, be secured. That the apartment be used, if it's used for renting, then rental registration would be required. That the apartments are accessory to that business use. So really think through that and how you make sure that they're, they're really connected and that, you know, later on, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be a site condominium application where those units would be divided off and sold, right? They're, they're really part and parcel to that commercial use. On the square footage, you might want to talk through what that might be, what might be appropriate for a square footage. I note that there might be a garage or a porch on the drawing, so maybe think through whether the square footage includes that or not. And then any other conditions that the planning commission might, might want to talk through. So that's kind of what we were thinking as staff. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
How many occupants are there?
Really good question. I, I know that the applicant is here, his architect is here. I think that's something that would be really good to talk through. You know, some of that would probably be dependent on the fire code and building code during the rental registration process. But I'm not certain how many occupants would be in each structure.
Before we open it up to, um, discussion here, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to talk about his project.
Thank you.
Nick?
Would you, uh?
Please introduce your project.
Yeah.
Yourself.
Uh, Nick Capoletti, is that working?
It might not be.
Are we recording? We are recording.
Okay.
Does it, does it look on, Nick? Sorry.
Tap the thing like?
No.
No, it's not on.
I don't know that I need it on, but.
Well, it's helpful.
Did you ever have the, uh?
Oh, there you go. I just picked you up.
Hello?
Yeah.
It's better to hold it, pull it out.
It is, okay.
No, but.
There? Okay. Nick Capoletti, 3279 Blue Star Highway. First of all, thank you for considering this. Thank you for your work, greeting these neighbors. About three years ago, you folks, Michelle Pizzo, my partner stood before you, and you approved Capizzo's studio, which at that time was nothing more than a pole barn with, with no heat, no water, was being used as a, as a workshop. And I think you'll agree that three years later, we have done what we said we would do and created a really special space that's a improvement to what it was and that we've demonstrated that we deliver on what we say we're going to do in a quality manner. We did, uh, we followed all the requirements in that case, and we'll do the same this time with septic, driveway, fire department, um, everything. So, um, the vision is that, um, we've put about $300,000 into that space already. And, um, you know, it's a commercial space. I've been here 28 years. I love the area. I have no intention of leaving the area. And I've had businesses, but this probably will be the last one. And I, um, really wanted to put something that could be a lasting legacy, that could go on beyond me and Michelle. And, um, in order to do that, a gallery and a studio has, has to be, uh, has to be a little unique today. Opening a gallery and selling art and earning 30 or 40% commission doesn't cut it. So what we envision is, uh, what's happening, we, what we see is, uh, a lot of businesses in the tourism field are in the experience business. Even a restaurant could be said to be in the experience business. They have music, they have an outdoor market, Penny Royal, for instance, right? Eating there is more like an experience. So, um, what I envision with these apartments is that they will be promoted on Instagram, they will be promoted on our website, and, and that's my intention, only there, because I want them to be attractive to buyers of arts and artists. So I just had an opening. Here's a use where it would have been nice to have these. I just had an opening, Joe Hindley Show. Joe comes from Chicago, has customers from Chicago and Indianapolis, Indiana. It would have been great to have Joe come up early in the week, help set up, stay there. In that case, I wouldn't even have rented it to him. And I wouldn't have probably rented it to his customers who came with him. And that would attract the artist, that would attract buyers, and they would stay in the community for a week, and that would be a good thing. Another use is I have an artist that has offered, we're collaborating on doing a class. So if you've seen my space, we have a lot of green space. We're only using a fraction of our space. What's the percentage? 5%? Less than 5%? Less than 5% of the green space. So in this case, Elizabeth will come here, should stay in one of these units, and we'll have plein air painting. So you would come by and you would see maybe, uh, much like Oxbow, you would see maybe six or eight artists doing plein air painting. And some of those I would like to be able to house. And I think those are examples of the kind of uses. And, um, those will be very helpful for our business to be sustainable. As you can imagine, in the off-season, it's going to be very lean at a gallery. And, um, at that time, as I said in the proposal, perhaps we can fill this attainable housing need. Perhaps we can fill the attainable housing need even during the summer with SCA actors. I know they find private residences to live in sometimes. So we would be open to that. I think, uh, I think that covers everything. Uh, as to the question of how many, I will follow the rules. I don't envision more than two. That's what, you know, uh, I've had an Airbnb in the past. It was, it was a, a good experience, but it was a good experience because we managed it actively. We were there, we had a lot of rules, limits, they saw us. We didn't open up to, to anybody, and this would be much the same. These would be very well-qualified and filtered guests.
Thank you.
Any questions?
After we have the public hearing, then, um, everyone will have an opportunity to address questions with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chuck Carlson is here from, uh, he's our architect on projects as well.
Hello. Do I have to hold this?
Yeah.
Never done this before. Can I take my mask off? Um, I'm Chuck Carlson. My address is P.O. Box 111 Douglas.
Could you please sign in on the sheet up there and then, um, possibly speak a little louder? I'm not sure if the gentleman in the back can hear you.
Is this working? Can you hear? Can you hear it?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can hear you.
All right. You can still speak up though, I can't.
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, all right. So, um, uh, just, I, uh, I'm, I've learned earlier today, or late today, that there were some discrepancies on the plans that you guys have. So I have updated plans for you guys if you want to see them. And I'll, I'll tell you what your differences are. So if you're all taking a look at the new plan, uh, there were discrepancies regarding the square foot calculations for the three accessory units. And that was because we did change it, which were made kind of explained earlier today. So the, the new total for the accessory unit is 1,632 square feet. So that changed. And then also, I changed the parking for the units. We needed two parking spaces per code, per zoning code, per unit. So there are three parking spaces by each unit, and then there's also three parking spaces added. So those are the, those are the two things that kind of came up. So on the site plan, we met with the fire department. We ran this, this through the fire department to see what they would say about the driveway and the turnaround and the, the requirements for their infrastructure or whatever that they need. And you'll see, uh, there's some extensive notes at the top of the drawings. That's all from the fire department, from their review. So one of the things was, you know, if these accessory units or these dwelling units are not sprinklers, they have to be within 400 feet of a fire hydrant. So we designed that to be within 400 feet. So these are now approved, this, this concept drawing is approved by, by the fire, fire department. You know, there's a turnaround there and everything. It's the future accessory building. It's just for your information that, you know, maybe later on, uh, they can't come for another, you know, put another unit in, which will be more like the office or storage space or something. And then the second page, we just want to, I wanted to kind of give you an idea of what the design aesthetic might be. This is a concept design that I kind of pulled off from the internet. It was designed by somebody else. I did not design it, but it kind of gives you the aesthetic of what we see these buildings looking like. I added some notes to these, or some dimensions to these drawings, because I wanted to make it perfectly clear that, um, that the overall dimension of, of these units that we slapped onto the site plan is 34 by 16. That's the footprint, including the, uh, the, the patios and the porches and everything like that. So we went with the bigger footprint, uh, square rectangular footprint, just to give us a little wiggle room, so that when we do design these, we have some, you know, some space, or we have some wiggle room. So, and that is, um, you know, like I said, that's reflected in the, the total square foot. And it's also, I just wanted to point out that with, with this larger footprint that we went with for this, for this, for the last couple days, um, we are still under the 5% requirement for flat coverage. So that's it. Unless you have some questions.
We'll hold off on questions if that's okay. Until after we open it up to public comments. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
At this time, um, the planning commission will open this discussion hearing for public comments. Again, same rules apply. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address first. And I know it's a little intimidating to talk to us, we're so scary, but don't be scared. So, um, is there anyone who would like to begin? I see one hand up back here. Hello?
Hello? If I sign in there, I don't have to sign in here, right?
You do have to sign in up here, please. This kind of goes to our recording, um, person and that way we get your name spelled right.
Oh, I, you can't read my writing either.
Sean Steele, 3291 Blue Star Highway. I'm Nick's neighbor. I heard what you guys said about how the apartments have to be with the business. Nick, when he explained it, it seemed a little bit confusing to me of what his vision was of, was it with the business or, you know, uh, low-income housing or however he called it. But I just want to be clear that whatever you guys decide, it's concise of, uh, the same vision, is all I'm saying. So, um, I think it's a cool idea. I think it fits in well with that area, and I think it will help this business, but I just think, uh, we have to make sure that the, the ultimate plan is in place correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
Rob June, um, local realtor in town, um, also very interested in seeing what develops on Blue Star Highway. It was part of the decision for the medical marijuana, uh, new statement. Anyways, uh, I've known Nick for a long time. Uh, he's been a friend, as well as a client. He is passionate about his art, and I think that what he's planning on doing on Blue Star and his location is good for the art community. I've seen other people wanting to do the same thing on Blue Star and not bring it to fruition, and I think Nick can do it, uh, can do it and will do it well.
Thank you, Mr. June. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this project? Then at this time, I will close the public comments for this special hearing and open it up to board members to ask questions of the candidate or discuss this project further. Who would like to begin?
I can, I, I'm happy to start. I just have really two concerns. I think this is a great idea. My concern, and, and unless I'm missing in the zoning ordinance, that we're going to have an issue in regards to square footage of the accessory apartments. I don't believe our zoning ordinance allows this small of, of building. So that might be something that we need to really think about. It's 544 square feet, but none of our, even R1 is 1,000. So that's, that's going to be something that, it, it's going against our ordinance is really what it's doing, but not saying that that's not a good, this is not a good thought. I just don't, not sure how we get around that. And the second part is, I mean, I'm a little concerned in the application, that it does mention that it's going to be, these apartments can be rented out to others, and it's not associated with the business use. And so I think what our zoning ordinance is very clear, that if we allow this, these apartments can only be rented to, for those residents, those individuals using those apartments have to be associated with the studio. And I, I think our zoning ordinance is very clear about that. So those are the only two concerns that I, that I see that, again, realizing that we have to have all these other permits and so forth. But those are the only ones that I saw that really were something we need to work through and make sure that's very clear.
Thank you.
The square footage is really an issue, so.
That's a really good point, or two good points.
So, I guess this is for Renee. What you bring up about design relative to zoning. Now I know you're looking into changing the zoning.
Yeah, but it's not changed yet.
No, I never, I, I. So since that hasn't happened yet, but it could be forthcoming. Are we going to approve this now?
Well, let's, let's turn to the section, Denise. Do you have the section we talked about for the minimum square footage?
Uh, I only found minimum as regards to the art. R1, that's the only place that I see that we mentioned anything. I couldn't find anything unless somebody else found it. And we talked about apartments. We don't talk about apartments in regards to the minimum. We don't talk about apartments in regards to the minimum square footage. Someone wants to build an apartment. I, I didn't see that any, but you know what I mean?
Forty dash two two seven.
Apartment complex.
One thousand square feet.
But how do we shovern room size in a motel?
I don't know how to do. I know, I mean...
Is there a motel?
Yeah, but there, but there, it's a collaboration of, of units, not just individual units.
But this is three, three units.
But they're separate. They're not attached. They're separate, they're separate units. They're...
Well, I think some of the, uh, captain's quarters or some of them are separate.
Well, I don't know what they did in the past. I can, I can always...
I'm curious, because it is a commercial corridor, are we a motel?
So I've looked, I've looked through a lot of this. Um, so hotel, motel, we don't have a minimum size per unit. The point about the minimum in residential, well, this is C2. So I thought, well, you know, we're silent on minimum size for accessory apartments in C2. We don't have a floor. Um, and, yeah, so that's, that's how I thought about that. Um, I certainly I'm aware of the one thousand, and then if it's a two-story, you know, the, the footprint can be, I think, seven fifty? Seven hundred. Or seven hundred, but, um, that was, you know, we've, I've worked with the architects and the applicants for several months before we even brought this to go through some of this thinking. Um, so it's, it's, we're, we're sort of reacting to what they've presented in the absence of a standard.
May I, may I address that?
I don't think right now, because we closed the hearing.
Okay. Got a question, uh, picking up on what Denise was saying on the second point, uh, you have to relate to the business.
Yeah.
How is that ever going to be monitored? I guess where did, is that in the paperwork, the other side of us?
It is, it, well, it is, it is because the title of the use in the table is called accessory apartments in association with business.
And again, if we look at the definition of accessory use, accessory building, accessory structure, we have a used building or structure on the same parcel with and of a nature customarily insidious and subordinate to the principal use, building or structure. So if you look at that definition, so it would have to be, you have to be very clear that those parts...
If it had the SCA...
It could not be. It has to be directly associated with this, again, law...
Because that's one of the questions I would kind of direct to Captain Letty, is if the intention, if these are approved and built, will he be applying for short-term rental permits in the township right away? Because those can be rented to anybody. People do that all over the township.
And you certainly...
Yeah, but you can control the short-term rentals associated with the business owner, right?
I don't know. Association is a very loose word.
Yeah, and I, you can address this with folks if you'd like, yes.
Um, so, we think that...
Can I look up to the microphone?
Oh.
I mean, there, a lot of the questions are being directed to you, so please help us.
So, yes, we're, we're familiar with that language. First of all, the, on the, the size, um, we have been talking to Laney, we have been reading the regulations. Our intention was not to ignore the residential, but our intention or our belief was that we were guided by that it's an accessory apartment, and, um, so we thought that we could have made this application because it was not residential. And I was also guided by two other factors. I was guided by, um, the fact that there are other establishments which are below five hundred square feet. In fact, there's one that has been approved on my old property at sixty-five ninety-four Elegant Street, which is less than four hundred square feet, and that has been approved for long, uh, short-term rentals.
Is that in the city or the township?
Township. So, um, I, and, and there are others, I felt like you did, John, right across the street from me, are, um, is the Cobalt Inn with units that are about three hundred square feet. So whether, in practice, these are there. The last thing that guided us was the attainable housing committee is meeting. It, um, Douglas has done a report on this. Um, we thought maybe we could be, would be, um, uh, you know, on the, on the forefront of this, maybe dovetailing with attainable housing. On the other question, how do we, you know, policing is, is tough, and I'm not trying to mislead anybody. Um, I've said in, I've laid my cards out in the proposal that my intention is to advertise it on my website and on, um, on Instagram and, you know, use it as I've described. I don't intend to, uh, and I, I thought the SCA was a good thing. I thought that actors, artists, the creative industry, um, there was a marriage there. But, look, if you guys don't...
No, just donate it, though. They don't usually pay for that.
Well, that's fine.
Okay, just don't honor the...
Yeah. Like I say, I don't intend to always rent these. I intend to have them be available for, you know, a, a buyer. If a buyer's coming in from Chicago and he's, she or she, you know, wants to participate in a show, it would be, um, it would be beneficial for me to say, well, stay in our place. That's very, that's very common in business. So, um, have I, have I addressed your questions? And if you say, look, uh, the attainable housing thing doesn't make sense in the off-season, okay, I, I've been to those meetings, Chuck is on that, that committee. I thought that it, you know, people, people in the off-season often rent to, uh, locals who would want a long-term rental. If that's, that's not no skin off my nose. If you say no to that, that's fine. We won't do it. Thank you.
If I can make a comment in regards to the attainable housing, we're jumping the gun a little bit, because we have made no recommendations of whatever. We talked about it in the, the committee, but there's been no recommendation in regards to square footage. So I think we're jumping the gun on that one.
Absolutely, yeah.
We need to leave that separate. That's a, that's a separate discussion that may come forward. I think we need to stick to the, the application that's before us.
Yeah, and this project, we've talked about having this remain an accessory and incidental to the principal business unit. And, um, I think that, I mean, that's really what the discussion is.
Well, again, I think it's size too. I, I understand Laney, and I, and I'm not...
I hope you did just messy there.
Yeah, I'm just like, okay, I, I get this. It's not a hotel. It's not a hotel. It's an apartment. And now, if our zoning ordinance is silent on that, which apparently it is, then I still think we need to be very careful in regards to what we would consider as a minimum size.
I do too.
The minimum size. I don't think this is in Michigan, and this size, uh, we have to be careful in regards to the size, in regards to Michigan ordinance, is that wrong?
I, I don't work with the building, so I would to be able to answer that.
There is some slight precedent here, because on the adjacent property that used to be a business called the Tim Cricket, and those units were very small, and some of them actually still exist. There is, there's two in the back of a house on Old Elegant Road. I mean, they're nothing. They're just like one room and a bathroom in the back. And that was a business for, into the nineties or the two thousands. So, and it, I mean, it was literally right next to the property in question, so...
There is something in our ordinance that talks about any of these things that were built before nineteen ninety-eight, do not set a precedent for our decision this evening.
I think we need to look forward.
Yeah, then you do.
But similarly, to me, right down the street, the Shool Motel, those ones are...
But this isn't a motel.
This is not a hotel.
Okay, we all have, we can have, we're...
Right, so we're silent on that.
It's type of rental, and we don't enforce the size on a private home rent doing Airbnb for a bedroom.
But we do for a private home.
For the total footprint.
Yeah.
And we all know there are six hundred registered short-term rentals in the tri-community area. That's the reality. Can I ask Mr. Carlson a question? Just to clarify, can I, maybe I misunderstood you. When you made reference with...
Would you please pull up to the microphone, Mr. Carlson? Thank you.
You made reference with the revised site plan relative to the three units. I wrote, you wrote sixteen hundred square feet. Is that the total for the three?
That's the total for the three, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
And I, I also want to point out that there's a microsite parcel, um, coverage that these, that an accessory building can, can, um, maintain, has to maintain, and we're almost at the size of this, the footprint, yes, the proposing, we're almost at that five percent block coverage for accessory apartments. So there's that little sweet spot in there.
And just to be clear on your plan too, the, uh, future accessory building cannot ever be a residential building. Okay, that's, and you stated that before, but...
Yes, storage.
Just that is storage and workshop area, so, um, just for the people here tonight too, though, for your information. Okay.
And again, I, I'm not, I, I, I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to go against our zoning ordinance, uh, in regards to this, because I really do think this is a good, this, this is an excellent plan. The struggle is really the size of those accessory apartments. And do, can we, is there something within that as we create, um, the justification that we can lean to? And it does come back to, to... That, that's the only thing that I'm struggling with. And again, it's going forward and not looking back from what was done in the past in this community. You can't do that. This is a new zoning ordinance, and we've got to go forward. So, in a hotel, we can't, we can't compare it to that. I think that's the only thing that I'm struggling with.
I'd agree with Denise. I, I mean, I, I think for, maybe most people there for speak, I agree that the accessory building, uh, should be, uh, incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the business. I think that, that makes sense, because not, not for fear of what Mr. Capelletti is going to do, but the fear of what's going to happen when they sell, or the next person comes in. And it's just thinking forward and making sure we, you know, we protect, you know, what's happening. And then, as far as the size goes, I tend to, you know, I, I think we all like the idea of, of the affordable housing and the smaller, uh, square footages, but I agree with Denise where we need to be, need to be careful so that we set a precedent, you know, the precedent that we set going forward, we can be consistent with it, and, uh, you know, it doesn't, it's not moving and wavering, uh, so we're, we're making a decision, we're comfortable with that decision, uh, no matter what comes in front of us.
Just going on with Dave's stance, that's a comment. So if we okayed this, then, uh, Denise or her group make the recommendation, and it's approved, that the minimum square footage for a set of apartments, that's a larger, that somehow we need to make note that this was approved for that ordinance, you know, got to buy, something like that. But we're not, not hamstrung by that. We decide this is too small, but we okay it. We have to write the set standard of work. Somebody need something?
But to that point, is it, is it very pertinent that, hey, this is a, this is owned commercial? So whatever happens, the housing at lot size is irrelevant, or doesn't affect this. And, oh, my second point was, and I don't know if this is a question to Mr. Capelletti, but I haven't heard anything, it doesn't sound like there's any intention here to, like, grant anyone a year lease to live in one. Or should I ask? Maybe actually ask them, maybe.
No.
It's short-term. So it's, it's not really healthy, if that's...
Right.
And it is in a commercial, so...
Unless it's being leased to somebody who's part of the business.
So could it be permanent housing for someone?
Well, we, we talked about, like, if, I think Laney mentioned, if it was purchased and turned into a restaurant, well, then the housing would be available to employees of the restaurant, because that's associated with the business.
But it sounds like Denise is, is saying that it's possible that the housing committee needs to finish its work first, and it's, and I think there's seventy percent there, don't you Denise? I mean, they're, they're very close.
Well, I don't think we're going that, to the small though.
Well, are you talking about commercial...
No, I know, but I mean...
No, that's what I'm not getting at.
Well, but again, you got... Well, we're talking about housing, and if, if this kind of apartment dwelling on commercial, on, on commercial space is housing, it does sit in with the housing group. They're talking about all housing, yes.
But they're not dealing with short-term rentals, a bedroom and a house?
No, we're not, we're not, we're not talking about, no.
Unless, unless things...
I don't think this is, that's not what he's asking. It's almost like it's a mixed use, the, um, the mixed use parcel in some way, is that you have a business and then you have living, uh, quarters on, on the same parcel versus, okay, maybe his studio's below and his living arrangement's up above, so it's a mixed use. So in essence, that's what he's asking for, and, and I'm, I'm in all favor with having that discussion, um, in regards to a mixed use, uh, associated with his business. But the size, I'm still struggling with this, how do we get around this size?
I know that this isn't a motel or a hotel or a motor court, but I did see the minimum guest unit size for that type of use is a hundred and eighty square feet.
What, what are you on?
That's a special uses, section forty dash seven two three. Very different. I know they're attached.
Well, I think that's...
These are different, but I, I do think that's...
Hundred and eighty, I, 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 that's our current order.
But for a motel, so it's all attached.
Well, I didn't say that they have to be attached.
It's just a hotel, motel, motor court.
I mean, as I said, captain's quarters have to be attached. So then, uh, the lot, make sure, when we, I think we approve, I think it's good for them. I don't know.
I know, it's really, it, it gave me a lot of trouble too when I went through it, and, um, transient cabins, motel means a building or group of buildings on the same lot, whether detached or in connected rows, containing sleeping units which may or may not be independently accessible from the outside and designed principally to accommodate transient motor vehicle travelers. The term motel includes any building or building group designated as motor lodges, motor inns, transient cabins, or by any other title intended to identify them as providing lodging, with or without meals for compensation on a transient basis.
But can I ask Captain Capelletti or Mr. Carlson a question? Are there going to be, um, kitchens in this unit?
No.
So this is just a sleeping quarter?
Mm-hmm.
So they're not able to cook? They cannot cook in these units?
I, I, you know, to be honest, I don't envision that. I, you know, many of these units have, uh, microwaves and like college refrigerators for convenience. That's not uncommon. But I don't, uh, no, we don't have planned kitchens.
Is there a bathroom?
Yes. Have you called the kitchenette? Probably a kitchenette, yeah. It's, I guess it's in the motel. So, um.
So if it's consistent with, um, the motel, it's not such a transient lodging, that, that is standard, because this could certainly evolve someday into, into transient lodging, that kind of movement, that kind of lobby earlier on, so, I mean, if it's consistently hotel, then, then should we, again?
Yeah. In this situation.
Is it potentially classified?
Uh, Lenny, I'm jumping ahead if, if I'm, if we get to the point where we're putting a condition.
Yeah.
Relative to the dish, is, is it potentially possible that a condition that puts a limit on the number of nights in a given time period? Is that going too far or is that something we could consider?
But this is a special use, so you can consider any conditions that help mitigate impact to adjacent properties, to the community as a whole, that is within your bounds. I think it raises some of the same questions about enforcement and monitoring that were mentioned earlier, just from a, you know, to mention.
And that applies to all our short-term?
Sure, it applies to all rentals.
Someone earlier asked about limiting or, you know, capacity number five, is that a link there? Isn't that, is that checked by the fire department?
No, the, the fire, in our rental ordinance, we have a limit of, um, I think it's up to twelve or ten. I don't have the, or the, the rental ordinance with me, but I think a condition saying that you have to have a rental permit for each one would then bring in any of the standards in that rental permit application.
And I know, again, that's a huge enforcement issue, it's the queue of most of the rental companies.
Okay, if we would use the one eighty square foot as you, um, regards to the hotel motel, then each guest unit shall contain a minimum of a hundred and eighty square feet of floor area. If you use the one eighty, you're thinking that, that the one eighty would allow three guests in that space, no more than three, three individuals in a five hundred and twenty-four square feet. That's a minimum that we would allow as they are presented. Did I do that right, Denise?
Uh, sorry, I don't, I would think, you know, a guest, in a floor area in a motel, you could have a king bed and two individuals, or you could have a couch, a pull-out couch. We, we, or a, what's the, Denise, something like that. They, they actually, the code has what size bed you can have in an area. I mean, and so, I'm not sure that you could have room for three people in a one eighty at all, I don't think that's allowed or allowed. You know, I'm reading here, um, forty dash six thirty-two, that says, um, in all zone districts, no more than one dwelling shall be placed on a single lot or parcel of land unless the dwelling is located as a P U D. And so if that one's sort of looking at, if you're going to add dwellings, this is a P U D.
Are hotels used?
No, but this isn't an application to run a hotel, to be honest. This is accessory dwelling, which is new for a, to a commercial business. And I think we have to stick with, um, that, I mean, that's being proposed and requested this evening. See, we were thinking of them as, not as dwellings, because in, in the zoning administrative group analysis, the definition of dwelling is any building structure or portion thereof which is occupied in whole or in part as a home, residence, or sleeping place, either permanently or temporarily by one or more families, but not meaning to include motels, hotels, tourist rooms, or cabins. So, in my mind, I was differentiating that's from a dwelling because of the commercial zoning district as well.
Thanks, that's great.
I'm very excited. So it's, I think it is good that we're turning over all of these stages, at least, trying to understand this, because it's new. It's a new use. I've been here a while. So, um, is there any further discussion, any more discussion?
So you're saying that an apartment is not a dwelling?
I'm saying that that's accessory apartment, you know, I'm not thinking of these as even apartments, they're accessory apartments.
Okay, I, 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 yeah.
And the differentiation is between a, that and a, and a dwelling is because a dwelling can have separate ownership and it's more permanent? It could, I mean, it's, mm, I'm just saying, but it's not meaning to include a motel, hotel, tourist room, or cabin, that this accessory apartment is part of a business use that is different than, say, um, an accessory building for, used as a dwelling unit, you know, that might have laundry, a full kitchen, these other things.
A porch.
Um, you know, even one of the, the recommended conditions is that it would never be divided, so these wouldn't be, it wouldn't be thought of as separate things that could be bought and sold with a legal description.
These are going to be, because these are going to be, um, uh, community sanitary as well as, or, I'm sorry, septic as, and water.
Septic well.
So you're on city water.
You're on city water, yeah, okay.
So there'll be, will they be individual meter?
I don't know what the requirement would be. I, I don't have a need to have an individual meter, but whatever the requirements call for.
Okay.
Okay, I want to make sure that we use the right language here. It really is important key in regards to, so we can tie it back to, okay, these are de, they're detached, right? Accessory, is it a building or is it really truly an apartment?
So the use of the table is accessory apartment in association with business.
Okay, is it important that we use the word detached?
I think when we're, when we're dealing with these, yes. It may be, Denise, that someday that mixed use building that you mentioned could be something else, another version of this where it would be attached, but these are detached.
Detached, okay. All right, so.
But on the same parcel as, that this, uh?
Yes. Okay, so as I look at what you provided us, Lenny, you've come, oh, no, I'm sorry, I take that back, I, I was ahead of myself, because we talked about the, that accessory building that they are, that they want in the future. We don't have to put anything in our motion about that, because that has really nothing to do with it, except that it cannot be used for the residential dwelling. That, that's the only thing that we really, you can do, you can put that up. It's a lot by use, correct?
Right, that's it.
So we just made you mention that, that accessory, this, the future accessory building indicated on the plan cannot be used as a.
For residential.
For residence.
I don't know if we have saved that. I think it's kind of given. Or they come back and amend this. Okay. To add another one, right, okay.
So should we mention that or just leave that alone?
I just left it alone because they'd have to come in if it were something other than.
An accessory building?
An accessory building.
Okay.
I mean, we just add in the document, three accessory.
Yeah.
Could you limit the number of accessory buildings on the property?
They would have to come in, um, our accessory building ordinance has a maximum of five percent of the lot area can be used by accessory.
Dwelling.
Well, buildings, accessory buildings. So that's where that five percent comes into play, so I think with these and then the, the proposed, they're right at the five percent. If they didn't do the future one, maybe they could add another one of these accessory apartments, but that would require an amendment and another hearing and a new plan. Well, and, and we haven't determined the appropriate size either, so. And I think that that's something that our, our housing committee is struggling with too, appropriate size.
So, can I ask you about the parking, because I also want, uh, I mean, by, the note says two parking spaces for each proposed unit, is that, is that correct? You said you added parking, I, I said three parking spaces?
John?
You didn't hear that, you need parking.
Yeah, but down here in this note, it says two.
Parking spaces for each proposed unit?
Yeah, there's, there's a parking space by unit and for three, um.
Well, I know, so, so what I'm asking is, because if I add up those parking spaces, it's three per unit. Didn't I?
Those are for the existing, the others are for the existing required.
This, is that fine?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know that, okay, I guess.
The actually ones that are proposing, yeah.
So you're, you're proposing one, two, three, four, five, six new spaces?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can see that with color, so.
Yep, I, I didn't see that, but I see that, I understand what you're saying.
All right.
Okay.
Pass. Proposed action. Question? What are you thinking?
I can't control it.
My thinking, you need a motion? Is that what you need?
Yes, because after we have a motion, and we still have discussion, so on the, on the recommendation, if, if there's a motion.
I'll, I'll get it, John. I move that we approve, uh, S A U.
Is there a number on this?
Yes. Thirty-two seventy-nine.
Is there a number?
For thirty-two seventy-nine.
Uh, okay, thirty-two seventy-nine, Blue Star Highway, uh, first, let's go, okay. With the following conditions. Uh, the one, the accessory apartment shall remain accessory to the principal business use of the, of the lot and land shall not be divided or separate, to, uh, to separate the uses. The minimum square footage of the accessory apartment shall be five hundred and forty-four square feet. Any accessory apartment used for rental purposes shall require a rental registration. The use of the, is contingent upon review and approval of a detailed site plan. At the time of the detailed site plan, all, um, necessary approvals and permits must be, uh. Obtained, obtained, thank you, I can't think of the words, thank you, obtained.
Can I ask you a question on a clarification? Um, the five seventy-three four? Did you say five hundred and seventy-four square feet?
No, five hundred and forty-four.
Five forty-four, yes.
I'll second it. Okay, now we open it up to discussion and then the planning group. Do you have any questions on any of the, um, recommendations with condition or any additions to the recommendations with condition?
All those conditions except for the minimum square footage of the rental registration were included in the original recommendation, correct?
I didn't do number, I didn't do number seven. I didn't do number six.
You didn't do number six?
I did not, because it's already allowed by use.
Right.
Correct?
Yes, yes.
And we don't have to address number six.
Okay.
So I didn't do it in that order, Daniel?
Okay.
I didn't, yeah.
That's right, I saw, I saw you hit up all of them, okay. Just wanted to.
Try to do some, uh, uh, okay, so, go ahead, John. I'm sorry, did I?
No, I was just gonna say, is there any reason, is there any reason to have concern condition wise, you know, to signage for the accessory? Has it, shouldn't be any for potentially advertising or?
That's a good question.
That year, rooms for rent. I just thought, delay.
No, but that, that, but again, John, I think that was, is already taken care of, because it's got to be, the person who's living and renting that, those units have to be associated with the principal business. So not anybody can go down the street and say, oh, I think I want to rent those.
You could go in and buy a piece of art and then.
So the, the signage, we would revert to the C two.
Get that thing from Michael, that's mine.
So it would be, uh, whatever the signage is allowed in the C two, we can't regulate the content.
Okay, I'll just, I don't really have a.
So I think that, yeah, yeah, no, I think it's a good question. But we would just revert back to that you're allowed one business sign per parcel, not exceeding thirty-two square feet, so, um.
He only has one.
He only has one parcel and he has one sign, he could make it bigger, um, up to thirty-two, but yeah.
Again, I don't think, you know, as, as I understand the application and what he has talked about, this is not a hotel, so he's not going to have a vacancy or no vacancy sign, is that the individual coming in, he's, they're going to talk to him and it's going to be associated with his business use. So the, the S B A, as much as that is, it might be a great idea, that's, that's not his business. It's an art dealer.
Well, you could argue community support, all sorts of people get rooms, yeah.
But that's not an art, that's not associated with his business.
Salketrick Center for the Art, they have an art gallery.
That, that's not his business.
And I don't care if the S B A stays.
I, I disagree, John, that, that's his business.
Yeah, I, I agree, yeah. Any, any other thoughts here, Dave? Anything? Daniel?
Um, Michael, that was very thorough, um, thank you, Nick, for, for, uh, sitting through this, and I know it's difficult, but I thought that it needed to happen in order to move forward confidently, um, because I think that a lot of us really do like your idea and your plan.
Thank you, Michael.
Bye.
John, do you have anything else to add?
No, I like it.
I will add that, thank you for meeting with the fire department ahead of time.
Yes.
Yes, I think that was really good due diligence on your part and, and to save you and us in trouble in the future, so, thank you for doing that.
I was going to ask earlier, thanks for bringing that up, but they haven't submitted anything else. Sometimes it's a matter from the fire department, like, yep.
They have, uh, but since this is the use.
Right.
We'll bring that to you, uh, with, if, if in what they're just saying. Okay, yeah. Should be used, no problem. I just had a couple comments. Yeah, I would like to add.
Yeah, I would like to add, um, the accessory apartments shall remain accessory, and I said incidental, accessory and accessory and incidental to the business. And, um, minimum square footage, um, I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable with five forty-four, but, um, I, I was gonna suggest six hundred, but I also wonder if you could say five forty-four excluding garage and porch. And I know there's no garage on the plan, but can the actual living dwelling at a minimum be five forty-four or five fifty? I prefer six hundred, um, just because our, our ordinance says a thousand, and that's just a huge change, and we haven't had the discussion yet at our level, so it, it worries me a little bit when we're approving that small of a space. Um, and, um, the last thing is that the business owner of the business on the property, so you may eventually still own the property, but you may not own the business, you may sell your business, which is uncommon. So, that the business owner remains the landlord or the governing person of those apartment units on the site. Is that something we can put in here?
Okay, so you're asking a change in the motion?
And I'm asking for an addition to the motion.
All right, so that means I have to accept it and my second has to accept it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's go back and see what it is that you wanna do. So, the first thing I asked, uh, mentioned was accessory apartments shall remain accessory to the principal use, and land shall not be divided to separate the uses. Do you wanna add something to that particular state?
I, I added incidental to the principal business use.
Remain accessory and incidental.
Okay, I can accept that.
Thank you.
Okay, so the other one was the minimum square footage of the accessory apartment shall be five hundred and forty-four square feet.
Excluding the garage.
There is no garage.
And the porch.
They, they mentioned that that...
There is a porch, isn't there a porch?
So, that's just the concept, yeah.
Yeah, so... So, that's something that can be done, is that correct?
A porch?
No, that, that the living quarters can be five hundred and forty-four square feet at a minimum excluding the porch space.
Yeah.
And gar, any garage space, correct? Okay, that's my question.
Should we just say the minimum exterior square footage?
Yeah.
Well, if you're living?
Measured by...
Is living square feet?
We're not talking living.
Let's get them, yeah, those living space.
What?
Condition space.
Condition space?
Condition space, fine.
Okay.
Condition space with the accessory.
Is that understood by builders in regards, in everything regards to conditions?
Because they usually measure exterior.
Well, I, I know, but I just wanna make sure that that's a, a common word, that nobody's gonna have any issues with.
Well, I think one thing I was thinking about is if there's, you know, a, a mezzanine or a loft, right? So, is it the footprint or could there, would you add the square footage, or the ground level and then the square footage of the loft here?
That's the floor space.
Floor space.
So, again, I was just looking at what was on the preliminary plan, the thirty-four by sixteen. That's what I use. Thirty-four by sixteen, okay, you can have that.
Right.
In this little rect, uh, rectangle that comes off of the thirty-four by sixteen area, I, I assume that was the porch, porch, or...
I assumed that that was the second floor.
That's what I thought, 'cause it had a little bed in it, or something, with the porch.
Did I look at the, that, that was the second floor? That the bottom floor, the...
It's right here on the, on the line.
I know, but I looked at it, this. Yeah. And that, that...
You're looking at the second floor?
This.
Yeah.
Yeah, in this little concept drawing, there is a loft, uh, in this concept. Um, the, with the, the sideboard square feet is including, uh, in this concept, is including the porch and the steps.
Yes.
So, I'm, I'm suggesting that it not include porch or steps, because so... Just floor space, no porch space.
Including a potential second floor.
Okay, so we're gonna say main floor space, is that okay to me?
Well, first of all, I mean, you gotta make sure everybody understands what that means. Are we clear on what that means? And that, that changes your concept.
Main floor interior.
Okay.
My question is, does it impact the five percent?
No.
No.
Not at all.
Okay, so the minimum square footage of the accessory apartment shall be five hundred and forty-four square feet.
Or the, or the minimum square footage of the interior main floor space of accessory apartment shall be five hundred and forty-four square feet.
Okay?
Yeah.
Laney?
Yeah.
And I have no more room here.
All right, I can accept that, I can accept that. Okay, uh...
Okay.
What else did you want to add?
With the porch.
Okay.
Yeah, you can add a porch, but maybe you can only let that mirror.
But it's not going to be a living space.
Right.
And the last thing I added was that the business owner remain, well, I said the landlord of the apartment units, or whatever we're calling them now, the accessory apartment. Because often businesses are sold, but someone else is the landlord. I mean, if someone else owns the property. So, that the business owner, depending on, if, if you sell the business to a hair salon, the hair salon then can utilize the property and, and they become the landlord for that, those dwellings. Does that make sense? You are no longer the person running those dwellings because you don't have a business there, and so it's not associated to the business.
Business is what's going on.
The business is controlling the use of the...
But isn't that already stated in our zone?
I don't think so, you know, we don't have a definition of this use, right? And so, it, it, you know, I guess to the point that should the studio be sold to someone else, uh, or like a hair salon, then that owner, the, the business owner, or the, I guess, even the...
The hair salon is my principal business now.
Right, so they would be the one...
But the owner of the property, that, that's what I'm saying, the owner of the property is not his principal business, so it has to relate to the owner of the business.
The business operating on the...
It has to relate to the principal business.
All right, so...
So, the business owner remains the landlord.
The whole accessory building is, is... Remains accessory to the principal business use, didn't we already say that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Isn't my number one satisfying yet?
Wait. What's your number one?
Accessory apartment shall remain accessory to the principal business use. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, incidental, incidental. So, my number one that I have in my motion is there, is number four there. I did that one first. I didn't do it in the order that Laney had.
Yeah. I'm not gonna remember that order unless you wanna come back and show me all that.
I can show you, but number one was accessory apartment shall remain accessory to a principal business u, uh, we added the word incidental.
Yeah.
Incidental... To the principal business use. So, didn't I, didn't, didn't that already say?
Yeah, I think it was for your, yeah, I am satisfied.
Okay, I am satisfied, as long as you say the principal business.
Okay.
Instead of a principal business.
Okay. So, again, if we sold it...
Shall not be divided.
Sold that, that...
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that, thank you.
And so, the hair salon, that's the principal.
Yeah.
Yes.
And add on the property, maybe.
Yeah, just say on the property, that's good.
I can accept, uh, on property, I can accept all those.
So, we have a motion.
Is that my second?
Fine, yeah. The move by Cluster is supported by Eileen. Are we ready to vote? If it is a, a public hearing, we will do a roll call vote. Um, DeFranco?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Comrade?
Yes.
Cluster?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Israel?
Yes.
Motion to pass. Thank you, it's a, it's an innovative, different project for us, and, um, we appreciate the opportunity to talk about it.
Thank you. Like to stick around, all right? I've had a wonderful day, you guys just made my day, virtual at this time, I'm great.
Virtual, yeah.
Virtual next one, okay. All right, so if everybody leaves, we're not listening. Next on the agenda this evening, and very important, is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend sections zoning forty dash six thirty-seven and forty dash seven eighty C. On item five of chapter forty, the code of ordinance, this township of Togatop. Laney, would you like to introduce this topic, please?
Um... I don't know why I called it groundwater protection, I meant pond. But, um, so for you, we have the modified ordinance to regulate recreational ponds. Um, ponds under a quarter acre for any purpose are allowable, the measurement is from the surrounding grade. Ponds over a quarter acre are permitted when associated with an approved drainage plan for development, when they're for irrigation for agricultural uses, when they're located on an approved salt source, or when they're part of a PUD or mining operation approved as a special land use by the Planning Commission. Any pond would require site plan review and site development and restoration plans, uh, per the ordinance. And then, if the pond is under the jurisdiction of Eagle, Eagle would have to sign off, and you would also have to have the soil erosion and sedimentation control plan approved by the county. So, uh, the draft that you have is pretty much exactly like we discussed, and as I said, you, there are some new things though, because we did have the Township Engineer review it. Um, you all talked it before the green highlights, um, so I just wanna go through those, so you have them. I, I was really happy that Dana provided the comments that you did. Uh, one is that number ten is that the zoning administrator of Planning Commission, you reserve the right to request review and comment of any professional engineer, environmental consultant, or others at the expense of the applicant. You know, I think that's a great addition, because you might want an environmental study, or a groundwater report, or something of that, uh, nature. Um, in item fifteen on the next page, the, um, we had in there, within two months of completion of any water body, more than a quarter acre in size, and as built, and he added topographic survey, I think we just said survey. So, he said topographic survey of the water body at the top of slope and water level with distances to the nearest property line. So, again, kind of learning from some of the experience we have. And then he also asked, added that we might want the pond cross-section to verify the depth of the water. And then, number seventeen, escrow account shall be established for review of pond applications. That's sort of understood, but we're just making it abundantly clear. And then, um, for the definition, Dana made the point that, well, some of these water bodies, the, the waters absence lows, right? Like after heavy rain, drought, he would say we should have it, um, add that design to have standing water for more than seventy-two hours following a rain event. So, again, I had those reviewed by the Township Attorney as well, he thought they were good additions, he didn't have problems with them. So, I feel like this is, uh, in really good shape, but certainly, you know, we write ordinances all the time, things can get amended, we don't always get it perfect. It may be the worst we need over here, maybe someday we learn from this and make adjustments, but this is a really good start, I think it's an informed ordinance. Yeah.
Good, well, thank you.
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
Okay, and because this is a public hearing, um, I don't think there's been much help here representing the ordinance, but, um, I will open the public to comments, again, the three-minute guideline is in place, and, um, it's not a question and answer period, but we do listen to what you say. So, is there anyone that would like to speak to this ordinance this evening? No? Okay, then, um, at this time, I'll close the public hearing for public comments, and, um, we'll move on to the commission. Do you have any questions about this or any additions?
I just have to comment, I think it's way more than just the start. In a positive way, I think the additions from Dana and, and council.
I had, um, one phone call about this, um, from Roy McPhee, and he, uh, just suggested that in, I believe it would probably be in, uh, number one, or, he didn't actually name a number, so he just said, make sure the ordinance covers, um, the fact that when soil is removed, there is a plan for it to go somewhere. And, uh... Does that, does that make sense? And so, um...
So, it says that each, in number one, each application shall be accompanied by a process plan, which shall reflect or describe how soils will be managed on-site or on-site during excavation.
Good, I, I mean, that's, that's good, I just want...
Yeah, that is, uh, number at the bottom, C-one, and then it continues to the next page.
Is there any provision for overflow?
Overflow of soil?
Ponds.
The water.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's big rain, uh, and, and the water comes up to the top, and in our, uh, development, we have a second pond that catches the overflow of the first one.
Well, I, I think there, there's something in here, if I remember correctly, that they're designed by, aren't they, uh, designed by a professional engineer? I mean, that, you know, that takes into account a hundred-year flood, and, I mean, that's usually what the standard design is, about a hundred-year flood.
Okay.
And they, they can overflow.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's, you can't predict everything.
Rivers can overflow.
Yeah.
That's right.
Well, I mean, a few things, like we do have step backs, which can help, like the pond has to be at least sixty feet, you know, from the edge of, um, the property. Um... So, there's a little bit of buffer there. Uh, we do talk about, yeah, prepared by a professional engineer. Um, we do talk about...
We're requiring a drainage plan.
A drainage plan.
Okay, all right, good.
So, if you were looking at this, I have one question, if you have two lots, and, um, your pond can be twenty percent of your lot, and your neighbors can be twenty percent, can you adjoint those ponds?
Well, no, because they have to be fifty-foot step backs for each of those ponds, so at least a hundred feet between them.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think the one thing that I'm struck at, at, at this hearing is, we're, we're, we are replacing, tell me if I can, tell me if I'm, you know, full of water, yeah? Uh, that we are replacing the word pond to water, man-made water bodies, correct? So, should we not have pond in here at all? The word pond in here, except for that definition, but pond, the phrase is that, in the green one in number fifteen, pond cross-section.
Oh, yeah.
So, should we remove the word pond from that?
Yeah.
And call it a...
Maybe water natural.
And then, number seventeen, escrow account shall be salvaged for review of pond, no, it's a water, uh, so should we be consistent? And no place that we can see the word pond as the definition?
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
Thank you. Person-made, we should really be gender neutral. Okay.
Sure, is that the only pond in the whole thing?
Well, there's a.
Number fifteen stuff, and then.
I don't know, those are the ones that I just picked out, but I don't, we are using that word pond, but I think we're trying to eliminate the word, we're trying to eliminate that concept, right?
Yeah, you're going to say water body.
Yeah.
And if you want to be general, you can add that in your motion, and we can change this to the board.
I too thought, Ian, this is a really good, I was really pleased with this ordinance, I said that last time. I mean, the changes that have come forth here, I think are even more descriptive and better. The only thing that I would add, and this is just maybe for our protection from residents, maybe? And trying to maybe better control when we get information from a developer, is we talk about within two months of completion of any water body, more than a quarter acre in size. I wonder what do we define as completed? Is that, I mean, because somebody could say, well, you know, after I develop my homes, you know, it's at the end of the development. Or it's not, maybe it's not landscaped, maybe, who knows? I just wonder if we, if there was some language that we could define completion.
That's a good point, because there's, there's also nothing that says that they couldn't, you know, what if they don't want to finish it? What if the market drives up? Or something, right, like, you know, you know, we have that instance, so.
Yeah.
What if they, I would take that, if you would approve a plan and they would, the expectation is that they're going to eventually, like, there should be maybe a timeline when you approve it, that that's completed. And if it's not completed, then they would amend their plan. But I know I'm not directly answering those.
Do you have any suggestions, Dana?
Well, I almost think that the best way is once, once that water body begins to accept detention, that's. Now, that might even be right.
Something you can mention, finish ready, because I mean, it can take a crack to hold, it's going to be done, it's got to be done, it's got to be graded properly for each claim.
Yeah, and that's part of it.
That's what I was going to say, within two months of completion of an approved plan?
That's what I was thinking, the final site plan.
Yeah. That may be the best way, so when you get approved. Yeah, but it's two months, maybe too fast then.
It might be.
Because if you get approval in January.
Well, it's completion of their plan, so it might take them four years to complete their plan. And so then it would be, yeah, it, two months may be too quickly to do the survey if it's in the middle of the winter or something.
So you've got a timeline, then you've got the part of the plan, then you've got.
The renovation.
How about completion of the other part of the plan, local. What's been done for the area, that's a case. I, if you're looking at, yeah, stop, for my plan, then it's the timeline that's.
Well. Did we say the end of the ordinance that has to be completed within six months of the issuance?
So that's going to extend.
And we can extend it once.
And you can extend it one more.
Yes, but then you have to.
And what's the review due to two months, three months? Because I think that date doesn't matter. Take care of the issue of it, the plan has got to be a, is that?
Yeah, so.
If I think about it from a developer's perspective, I want to have my, I have to have asphalt approved. I want to have them approved prior to landscape. Because I'm not going to put my landscape down and then survey it, and then, you know, total it, and then say, oh, I got to rip all this up. Not that I'm saying, maybe, maybe that is the right ways from six months, you know, from approval, but. If you think about it that way, I don't know.
So how would you want to change this? Within, I had, within two months of completion of an approved plan, they should do the survey.
I think I like six months.
Six months? So the whole thing, is she good?
Okay, so I, I'm confused, and number fourteen says that I have to have this completed within six months of the issuance of a permit.
Yeah.
I can give them an extension.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's say we give them an extension. So then therefore, number fifteen then takes effect, because now it's completed. Because we said it had to be done in twelve months. They have to have the survey of the, to really, it's almost like you get a issuance of a occupancy.
It's like you see a.
Yeah, that you're verifying, and they have to have that done within two months, because it's already completed, because fourteen, nobody said it's completed.
Yeah.
Then I have to have the survey, and we have to have that within two months. I'm assuming that means if it's not correct, it's like, whoa, something's wrong here. Is that right?
Yeah.
So if that survey doesn't comply with the site plan, then we will then say, stop, you don't get basically.
You wouldn't get your pond back, or, you know.
Is that, is that how it's supposed to be?
Or they need to amend their approval?
Yes, in my regard, I think we are covered in this language. Because we're saying, because right number fourteen is saying, you got to complete it, right?
Yeah.
Within six months, which is what we said earlier.
And then within.
Yeah, you grant one six-month extension, yeah, and then we're, and I think, yeah, I agree.
So let's say I get it done in six months, I have two more months to get the survey. That's nice. Is that what you want?
That's perfect.
Okay.
So as I said, I'm just adding in fourteen, "all man-made water bodies shall be completed according to the approved plan."
Yes.
Within six months. Can we add that?
Okay, that's good.
And then fifteen, "within two months of completion of the, of the, of any water body to the approved plan," or something. You know, think in your motion, just say in fourteen and fifteen, you know, refer to the approved plan, and I can make that change. And then change the word pond in fifteen and seventeen to man-made water body.
Anything else related to pond?
No, this is the water body ordinance.
Water body. Excellent, excellent.
Okay, is there a motion?
I think a motion. And ordinance to amend section zoning, section zoning, section forty-six thirty-seven and forty-seven eighty, chapter forty. Recommend approval for the planning commission per the recommendations made this evening, or otherwise as written.
I'll support it.
And is this not, is the recommendation, this is our recommendation to the board, right?
Yes, that's what he's added, what he's saying. Prior to this, that we were trying to come back here.
So.
Yeah, we have to come back here.
No. So moved by Ily, supported by Comrex. Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? And we will do a roll call vote, please, DeFranco.
Yes.
Ily.
Yes.
Comrex.
Yes.
Webster.
Yes.
Wurk.
Yes.
Israel, yes, motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Lenee, for all your work on this. So really. I do not take a lot, I do not take a lot, I mean, really, Nick, and everybody, it's a real team effort, everybody. Much needed. Thank you.
It could be the first one, I think.
Yeah, yes, we found a few. Yeah, we found a few.
You don't know many, if you do, what's that?
So after this meeting, I'll make these and send them to Mary Dan Joe.
Yeah.
Who cuts the board, and then they'll go right to the board. Super, that's great, thank you very much.
Cool.
Okay, so moving on to new business, and thank you for your patience this evening. A site plan review for Michael, is it, Wittis? Wittis? To build a life industrial building at the I-1 district at six-three-two-two Houston Road, parcel number twenty-two-six-zero, zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-zero. Lenee, would you like to introduce your project? I'll just be brief, it's pretty straightforward, and thank you for staying with us. We always have our public hearings before regular items, in case the public shows up. So this is a fifty-by-ninety-four office slash machine shop, I think also both storage and both repair. It's a site plan, it's a permitted use in the industrial district. Pretty much everything has been addressed. I just want to call out the trash removals, we wanted to talk about that tonight. Certainly, all the requirements of the township engineer would have to be met. I'm not seeing any new exterior lighting, so we don't need a photometric plan. We need to talk about whether, like, floor drains, I think that is something that has been mentioned by the township engineer. It's also required, because we're in that overlay area for the groundwater protection. So we just need to know how and if any floor drains will be included. And then the biggest thing was really the exterior of the building. We do have architectural standards, so I do think we're just going to need to see an update of the building exterior. I don't think that that is a problem for the applicant, they've been working hard on this building, and I know they wanted to meet our ordinance standards. So other than, you know, the typical standards, we've included number eight about the building facade. So that was really the only thing that stood out that is for this review. But otherwise, it meets all of our standards for setbacks, and landscaping, and parking, and trash, uh, trash, please, do you talk about trash? We don't have a requirement of, if they're doing a dumpster, then we're going to be the exposure, but maybe they're just going to have the residential pickup and contract that way.
Okay, so at this time, we invite you to come up to the podium, please, and introduce your project to us. And thank you for giving us such a complete.
No problem.
Application.
My name is Mike Wittis, thank you for reviewing this today. Sorry, I want to apologize, my phone went off, I'm part of hearing, my wife has something on my phone where if you hit the down volume three times, I don't know if this is a common thing, but it sets off like a call police alarm, which is, that's what that siren, I didn't even know what it was when it happened. My daughter did it once before, and it was not good. But, yeah, I, as far as trash goes, I don't, I'll do whatever is, you know, is required, I didn't even think of that, I don't, I don't anticipate I'm generating much trash, to be honest with you, for the use. But whatever, you know, whatever is best. I know, we've got like an in-and-out driveway that's already existing there, so I just want to make everybody happy, that's all. I don't have, you know, we, we, I got, you know, a little weird thing, my wife is due in January, and I'm, we're trying to move from Chicago, and part of the move is more not so much the housing for us, as it is me having to go back and forth to Chicago right now. And so I want to make sure when we have the second child, that I can be closer to home, and not be commuting, because it's, I think it's been difficult for my business there, and so this is my, next chapter of my life.
So you'll be moving here?
Yeah, we, we actually, yeah, we bought a little fixer-upper house in Douglas, so the whole thing kind of worked, would be great to be able to be close to. I had a business in Chicago with my brother, which COVID was really hard on, so we, a part of, that's why the building really, I didn't, wasn't really sure how to approach it, with, because I know it was in the industrial quarter, I wasn't sure, was it, is this a business, or is this not a business? But it more, you know, it's more just for moving my stuff from Chicago, a lot of it's not used, some of it's just vehicle storage that I've committed to, and we ended up closing our business there, so. Really, it's, the machine shop side that's shown there is more of a hobby thing, I have a mill in Allee, and I make some parts out of metal.
And so the storage will just be for your own possession?
Yeah, for my, right, for my own, so I mean, a lot of it's moving a business that we have, that we've had, Chicago has had some hiccups with, we had a pass-through on, not as anybody's, then we have pass-through on taxes that went up four-hundred percent on us, so we had to absorb it as a tenant, and we were like, uh, kind of put us out of the location we were in, which is what it was. So, yeah, this is more of a, this is more of a personal use thing, but to be able to.
You're not the only one to have moved here.
I know, you know what, and I actually, I've been talking to people, and I'm like, I hope we're not the only people doing this, because we do have a little.
Every day.
I have a two, almost two-year-old, and I have one coming in January, so we're excited to be a part of the greater community, etc.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, I feel like I've met everybody a little bit, just kind of hearing the conversation about this.
Well, because this isn't a public hearing, we can open this up to our commissioners right now to ask questions, if you don't mind staying here. So I know you had your hand raised, Lenee.
Yeah, Mike, when I read it, I was a little bit confused, is this a place for your hobbies and kind of messing around by yourself? Or do you also run some kind of a business, like you do machine for people, or you might repair cars? I wasn't clear whether it's you're in business, or you're just having a great place to.
It's mostly a place to be, to be, and to have some stuff that I can't, you know, in Chicago, space is so limited, that I can't have my own personal belongings, don't.
Because you mentioned an office here, so that kind of got me thinking.
Yeah. And I, like I said, I'm new to this, so I didn't know whether to put it as, and just so you could see, like, if future use, there's an office and a bathroom, and it's, I'm the sole person that's going to be there. I don't have a business of employees or anything like that, really, the vehicle storage and stuff, but no, we won't be, that's not going to be like a car wash or automotive repair shop, or anything like that, anything I do under the roof is going to be.
The only other question I had, I think you mentioned Woodworking in here too, didn't it?
No, it might have referenced the machi, like the machinery.
Yeah, I was wondering, and maybe the fire department, probably, with the flammable materials, these materials, I don't know, so we're, I mentioned fire department, pick that up.
Yeah, I believe in, you know, the applications, there were some asks about some substances and different things that you could be using. And actually, with what it is, it's really, it's just bare metal, so there's no, no like combustibles or anything stored inside.
Lenee, didn't, did, did one of the groups want very, very. I was going to say, right, the one where, right.
I know, somebody told me that.
Tanya.
Yeah, yes, you did. Tanya Anderson.
Tanya Anderson.
That's right.
Which is, I don't know the name, that's.
Well, is it right? I guess right, because you.
On the corner, the black, the black one.
Right down there. So you have to do the same architectural standards, so when you.
Yeah, I, I pride ownership, I want it to look probably nicer than everybody wants it to look, so.
That's okay with us?
Yeah, I mean, I like to keep my stuff nice and accurate, it'll be aesthetically pleasing, so.
Is there a structure on the property now?
There's an existing, I don't know what it was, um.
About ten-by-fourteen shed.
Yeah.
A shed, okay.
Will that get torn down, or incorporated?
No, I would just leave it there for now, I don't know what it would, would.
No, no way.
Serve, yeah, it's off, on the, all the way back behind, it's not like accessible, where you can walk to it, basically, but it's not.
Lenee, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's a appropriate building.
Um, the only thing I would just, um, say about trash is, there is no stipulation that you have a, an outside trash receptacle, but if you do, then there is some stipulations as to how to enclose it.
Okay.
But you can just have a, your own trash barrel inside and put that out by the road every week like everyone else does, too.
But, like I said, it won't, I'm not going to be like a generator.
Um, will you ever have people coming to your facility and having need for parking?
No, other than my wife and, you know, my family, that's really, I was trying to do all this in one piece property, but the market here was good for everybody, went bananas, so I ended up with a house separate of where I could have a storage facility, so, yeah, I don't really have a, it's not an open door type of thing.
And so, do you have any parking spaces on that, it looks like?
I believe, yeah.
Yeah, everybody's here, right?
Yeah, I think we followed all the, Lenee had some pointers on-
Okay, that's what I thought, I saw the tree there, okay.
I know, we had some comments from the fire, uh, chief about, um, you know, driveways and stuff, and we addressed much of that, it was applicable to it.
Okay.
Okay, I do have one question.
Yes.
On the, on the first page, it says, if I, it says something about a future building?
Yeah.
Have you, are you thinking that you're going to add an additional building to this spot?
That was just to, yeah, because I think within, uh, not to do now, but as for a future, down, if down the road, I needed more space there to be able to have that already.
Would he have to come back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this one's pretty, to show that it fits within the setback.
Certain sizes, we can't up to thousands per season.
Okay.
Will, will you, do you propose to have, uh, floor drains in the building?
I, I, I believe we, we put them in the drawing, but I don't know that it's, you know, I don't, it's not something that's critical, it's not something I need, I just, like I said, I was trying to follow what my building was like in Chicago, so. But if, 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 you know, anything, I, I mainly am kind of neurotic about keeping everything clean, so I wash the floors off. But again, not doing automotive repair, whether there's any foreign substance in the drain, if there was. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
Because I know, we, we've worked with Jacob, uh, from the health department on the subject, because there is a pond there, and making sure that we, and I had Caltech's board, um, come out, and we, we've worked with Jacob to find the right place for the drainage field site that follows all this, you know, the setback to the pond and everything, so that, that was what took us so long to get here, I think, but.
The health department, yes.
Yeah, we have that all on file. We have, thank you for sending that.
This is Ari.
Your architect. Thank you, yes, thank you. So you, you did a very completed, um, proposal, so thank you for that. Any other questions from any members of the commission?
Um, with the architectural standards, would that allow for the metal exterior, or is that?
Because they would have to make the changes, that's one of our conditions, to, you can have that, but if there's a proportion.
Okay.
Right, I believe it's like a, I don't know what you'd call it, we have plans for it.
No, we are, well, I guess the, you know, metal siding is a very good material, both cost, and, uh, uh, doesn't require a high skilled labor to install, and also environmentally friendly material, it's recyclable, and, uh, uh, when you look at the design, I divided it in a roof height to break it down, and the only course is the reset, so wall is not to be continuous wall, just this, and also metal siding break up the half, uh, about three feet at the bottom, so, uh, I can use a different power to have, uh, uh, more attractive facade. So, uh, instead of, uh, introducing a artificial, uh, stone facade and so forth, this is more economical and supportably installed, and still able to produce the good facade. So that's, uh, my portion of the portfolio, three, two hundred.
Well, we do require 50% of the facade, uh, facing the street, has to be brick, touchstone, let's face blocks, footed blocks, native fieldstone, wood, or even. So would you be able to do that?
Well, let's see, result approved the vinyl siding.
No vinyl siding.
So.
I think it's just a facing the street.
I can't remember that, I, I really liked the two places that are built there right now, which is, I think, R A F electric, and then the other end of Gleason, the, the black building there that, um, I can't remember what they used up inside of it, they had a 36-inch, like a-
Yeah.
Something, but I don't remember if it's stone or what they have on it, I can't.
Yeah, sometimes it's just, uh, like, uh, it's not real stone, it's made to look like stone, and-
Yeah, right.
Culture stone.
Culture stone.
Okay.
So I guess it's just, this is our standard in that review letter, I think, you?
Okay.
When I read the, the real comment, you know, stones like concrete block or frozen silver, I guess the, all the natural material, and that environmental recyclable material, so I think from there, without siding, it would comply with that kind of criteria, I think nothing higher, so, so that's the, I introduce the, uh, dealing with the color differences and offset, uh, walls, uh, uh, different height of the building, originally building was a wall, same height building, grid.
Yeah.
Is, uh, and I, I suppose to the owner to break the building, uh, one condition is shorter and, uh, offset, and not, uh, maybe, uh, more acceptable to the function, that's it, against my portfolio. And also, uh, not the state required, kind of shield off, uh, the view from the, uh, breathing room, and, uh, so, I give it up, it's a bit of a, another material, uh-
Construction costs are, like, horrifying when I price it out. Honestly, I mean, I was, I was like-
We understand that.
Oh, my goodness, even with lumber going down, it's, to do a full building, it's, it's, you're hefty numbers to do it, so it's a little, little intimidating, but, yeah, I, I can promise you it'll be nice, just like the building on the street, but.
Well, once you have that, um, design, it has to be the facade that faces Gleason right there.
Right, yeah.
And you can, when you determine what it's going to be, Lenee can approve that, you don't have to come back before us for that facade, okay? Just so you, you understand that, but, but it has to be changed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? Well, thank you for moving to our community and, and buying property and doing something in it, we appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem, thank you very much.
Okay. Um, is there a motion from the board for this project?
I'd make a motion to approve with the conditions laid out by Lenee in the recommendation, do I need a reason or?
Yeah. Okay. I'll second.
And, um, roll call vote? Any more discussion?
So, is it, is the drain, um, uh, within that?
We talked about the, the drain.
She, uh-
Did I see that in there?
It said the conditions of the engineer should be compliant, so.
Okay.
Okay, so that's in there.
And, uh, same as the dumpster?
Well, that's a regular condition, yes.
Yeah, I was just asking whether it was covered within-
In the plan, the dumpsters will be surely included.
So, Lenee, is that covered in there? So that, we don't have any-
So, the dumpster, you don't have to have a dumpster.
You don't have to unless you need one, and then if you need one, you have to comply with the requirement.
So, so I would add that, Daniel.
Okay. So it's condition nine, I guess.
So, should, should a dumpster be provided, it shall be enclosed per coordinate standards. So only if you provide it?
Sure.
But again, you don't have to, that's up to you. But if you do, it has to be enclosed. Thank you. And you have to show us where it is on the site plan, too.
Did I take it from the engineer's comments about, uh, where the building is in regards to the culvert, didn't I read that?
Mm-hmm.
That, that's taken care of as, as well? I think it's not just where you put the building, it's taken care of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So you made a motion to approve with the addition of, um-
If a dumpster is needed, it shall be enclosed to conform with coordinate standards.
Yeah. And so it was moved by you and supported by?
Riley.
Riley. Any other further discussion? And we will vote, DeFranco?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Domore?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Worth?
Yes.
Israel, yes. Motion passed with unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your time and patience.
Excited to be in the neighborhood there. I'll be in Douglas, if you want, if you wanted to be here, obviously.
Well, we're trying to-
I tax it a little lower. I tax it a third.
Once you get in the area that you want.
Yeah, learn all that, you'll be moving.
Well, okay, well, I'm going to mention something during the staff, I'll figure it out on that one.
Okay.
Well, no, it's just related to housing, or maybe during our housing, okay. So, um, moving on to the next item on our agenda, um- I would, um, first of all, like to thank Denise Shifley for her services on the PC, and, um, number B is selecting a liaison to the Z B A. So is there anyone who would be willing to be the liaison from planning committee to the Z B A?
As I mentioned earlier, I would, I would be happy to be the liaison to the Z B A, I think it's something that I would actually enjoy doing, however, the only way I, I feel like I could do it is if I was set down from committee responsibilities, uh, at least as far as, uh, uh, being, uh, chair of any committee, um, it's just from a timing standpoint, and, uh, I've already pulled pretty tight at both ends, it is, but, but I, I do feel this is important, it's something that I, I wouldn't mind doing. I would be, uh-
Well, I think that's wonderful, that you would do that, Dave, because your background as a civil engineer is, um, very helpful in that regard, and bringing the information to us, and being that liaison is very, very necessary and needed. Um, is there anyone else that's ambitious and wants to do that?
That will stretch too thin these days.
Since you've already said too many, is there anyone in here who would want to chair the?
I'm wondering if-
Is that, since there's-
I'm, I want to chair one.
They, they meet more often, Z B A only meets like three, four times a year.
Right.
They should be meeting once a year.
But is there anyone on your safety committee that you think would, um, be able to step up and lead that committee?
Oh, we will talk on Wednesday.
Well, that's a good idea, you're going to-
Is there a vice chair there?
At this point, no.
But you're meeting Wednesday? What time do you meet Wednesday?
I meet at three o'clock.
Wednesday the first?
Correct.
So the first Wednesday, three o'clock, first Wednesday, one o'clock?
Okay.
Well, I, um, think that, you know, our job is to work hard to get someone to replace you on that, maybe probably.
Are you just talking, you were stepped up by the whole committee, or just the chair?
Well-
There's a difference.
Right, there is a difference. And you have to wait by the board, to zone it.
I have to think about that one, deep in heart.
So, um, it is a recommendation, we would make the recommendation to the board to appoint Dave as the zoning person, so that, that's a board appointment, and then, um, because the chairs were all appointed by the board too, it would be, uh, they were, yeah, you were, we will, um, I'll, I'll attend your meeting too on Wednesday, and, and help think about someone to do that, but I think it's all of our responsibility to say, wow, who can we get to do that? Any, any, uh, planning commission?
You actually could tell me, get one, right.
Whatever you're thinking. Another planning commission member?
Well, we're, we're holding a-
Forty-eight hours, yeah, two o'clock.
Then we can't move the deadline, um, I'm just asking.
To get in the packet, get reviewed. It was a Friday, there was one applicant, today I heard talking to someone else, is it a file? We, I don't know, it should take a while.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see what happens on that open position, it's posted on the website.
It sounds like, I don't know if we need to vote, I mean, what I would like to offer is, I think today would be great, this liaison.
Okay.
It sounds like sort of a package deal, yes, but Wednesday, you're going to know more about the committee, and if there's someone that might step up before we get recruited, we'll know a little bit more by Wednesday on if we have more than one applicant to replace Denise Shifley. And both then, the board meeting is two weeks to vote, so, I'm in favor of just saying, willing to say let's just do it safe, if it all works in terms of the-
Yeah, I, I-
To make sure, I know that Becky's going to help over the weekend, you're going to need it, so that's-
Right, I mean, I think we can work on that, um, I think it's very important for us to get a good liaison between the two boards, and I know you did that in your past, you were on zoning and planning, and you probably recognize the importance of that, too, you learn a lot by doing it, um, all right, well, I, I mean, I'll help you, Dave, find someone to do that, and Daniel will help to-
Yes.
No, I don't think, yeah, I think you're fine, this is appointed by the board, so, I guess just the endorsement, you know, knowing that they're taking this time.
Yeah, so I would just ask, um, maybe a roll call vote in terms of, um, saying that, do you endorse, um, recommending that Dave is the liaison between zoning and planning, do you endorse that, and can we recommend that to the board? All right, and then I'd like you to do a roll call vote on that. Daniel?
Yes.
Um, Riley, you can say, Domore?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Worth? Like that, yes. So, we all endorse that, and I will come up to finding someone, um, to take over the role of station on Blue Star. Um, now, our next order of business is the whole business and committee report, so, um, Dave, would you like to give an update on Blue Star's safety?
Well, I can- Well, I can say first off that we're gonna have to come up with a new name, uh, for this committee because, uh, as we discussed, uh, in detail in our last meeting, uh, our, our objective with this committee needs to be more of a, uh, township-wide, uh, viewpoint of safety in the community as opposed to just Blue Star. Because there were, there were things where, some of the things that we were directed to do was come up with some recommendations as far as, uh, you know, what we should do along the Blue Star, uh, Blue Star Highway. And it was made very clear to us that, uh, the things that I would tell you that, I mean, what we're gonna come and we're gonna recommend, you know, we should reduce the, reduce the speed limit, we should, uh, um, well, we were, we wanted to look at, uh, you know...
Lights and traffic lights and crossing.
Yeah, we talked about traffic lights and crosswalks and, and we, you know, we'd like to, you know, that's the things that we recommend, you know, looking at. However, we have no control over it. Uh, it's, it's all controlled by the county, and it was made clear to us that even if we pursued a reduction in the speed limit, which to me makes the most sense, uh, for a start, but, uh, with the antiquated methods of, of calculating that through the county, uh, we would put ourselves in a position of actually the county of breathing.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
So, uh...
That happened on sixty-four, uh, Stacy and Mike Street in New Year's itself. I think that was the example they asked for already. Yeah, forty-five.
It happened on sixty-second Street, too.
Don't ask for speech, Robbie.
It backfired, but it hasn't...
Really, they can backfire. Because it's set at the eighty-fifth percentile of the speed limit that people are going.
Basically, we're...
Which is too bad anyways, which doesn't make sense, doesn't it?
It doesn't make any sense.
I mean, there's a bill, I think, in the legislature right now to, uh, allow alternative ways of calculating that, to propering that down, but, yeah.
And it doesn't matter that it's...
It's all about design.
And, uh, and it doesn't matter in regards to that, the Blue Star is a mixture of residence, residential and commercial and residential.
These streets are all residential.
I know, it doesn't make sense.
Do you have...
Residential usually is twenty-five, if you're in a residential district.
Not in the...
Do you have, I feel like, you didn't ask me, my... I'm really curious about the relationship the township has with any of the road commission members. There's staff at the road commission, but then isn't there an appointed commission? A road commissioner?
There's a road commissioner.
Road commissioners.
Ask Craig Appley.
He's the only one?
He is the stewardess. But is there a board, or is it the county board of commissioners? Because...
When we had them on June, where the dugout road, Riverside Drive, trees, Craig is the commissioner and a staffman.
It's part of me, you know...
And they don't like this, like collaboration and cooperation and studies and deeper heels.
I know. But part of me feels like getting at these concerns through the election officials.
That would be the county.
But, okay, do some places have a separate board? Kent County has a separate board for road commissioners, yeah.
I don't think so. Brenda Marcy is our board rep two at the road commission, so that applies to another commission.
And Stacy, Stacy?
Yes.
From Jane, remember she got the light up here, Jane, um, she used to be, I can't remember. And she was asking, she said we should have Dean Camp at that.
Well, he's our county commissioner.
She said that's the one you really want, she said that's who we should address and residents too.
He comes to board meetings occasionally.
Yeah, but we should be really talking to him.
Do they take it so much like a weight changer?
She used to be a clerk, Jane Wright, or Jane, uh, is there? She's married to...
Jane Wright.
Yeah. But did she, I think she's victim now.
Oh.
Isn't there a name?
I don't know.
Because she wanted, she asked me, she's gonna go after, she, she wants to go talk to Dean, so... So it's, I feel like a very well one-pager with points and then inviting them in to a meeting or something like that. Like, I think you have to hit that through the elected county commissioner who then directs their staff to look at changing the design for roads or whatever our solutions might be. Because it's ultimately the design that dictates how fast people speak. And when they do the design, they design to a certain speed as well, which then says, oh, we need twelve-foot lanes versus eleven or ten. And every time we widen, then cars go faster.
And they don't wait from their standards.
They don't.
That's exactly what he said.
And they don't allow things to be within the right... Oh, a six, ten or disaster.
The fire chief agrees, and it could be a little creepy because that room is so small. And they wanna cut down too much.
Yeah, they did on Lake Shore, I mean, I was trying to help, I mean... I think you have to keep going at it through the county commission. All right.
Also, it's easier, but I don't...
Well, I will help you, um, try to make it easy on that, and we'll take your recommendation to make it more of a township safety issue then. But, um, is Brenda Marcy involved in your group too?
No, she isn't.
Okay, would it be helpful to ask her on that?
Uh, I believe that we were initially going to, but then, uh, that was, I don't really...
She asked me to...
It was Brenda that said she didn't want to, or...
Oh, she hasn't, she hasn't that time.
Yeah, she, I knew there was something like that.
Are you on it now?
I'm on it.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, Stacy, you're on it, that's the board person, okay, good. My one, I don't like them meeting, so, you know, not really.
Sure he is.
And you might wanna ask the county to give you, um, the last five or ten years of crash data.
Yeah, we have some of that from Gannick, uh, as far as Blue Star Highlands. Well, there was actually multiple intersections.
And you could, we could print you a map with Gator Board and you could pin them on the map.
You know, unfortunately, if I remember correctly, it really wasn't, there aren't as many crashes as you'd be like, see? It really isn't. Which is unfortunate, it's not...
I know, that's...
And I'm not taking a position either, man, I don't trust me, but because there's really relatively so few overall year round, there's the greater reaction when something, that stuff happens.
Who, unfortunately?
And when the lane opened on the highway, guess what? People were screaming about, it's like, this isn't just tourists, the highway's closed.
Yeah, the state police, the state police and the county.
Good catch, Sharon.
And you're asking for more, you know, parking and speed or anything?
I feel like people have at least some requests.
Yeah, one thing that was suggested to me from, uh, one of the Sogatuck, uh, council people. They felt like they've had really good success with the radar speed sign.
Yeah, I thought I was saying that.
Because, you know, they, they, people pay attention to it.
You know, and you almost make a gain, you're like, you know, friends go down.
I'm not gonna hit that ton, you're right.
Exactly.
Would the township have money in order to, I mean, that had come from the, the city, or...
I don't know, that's true, it's a city.
I brought that up and...
Would the township be in?
Someone said, uh, that that wouldn't be appropriate on Blue Star. Well, somebody knows...
Stacy, what do you have to say about that? Well, they were talking, it works better in like a twenty-five mile where you really want to slow down versus a fifty or, you know, typically they set it.
I see on highway.
Well, that may be a potential on that right there.
Right out here. What highway? Highway going right up to...
Oh, definitely when you're going through a detour.
You do?
I mean, it's your structure.
Uh, radar. There's one going to be oval, down there.
No, I know, but I don't, I don't, I've never seen one on a freeway.
Right.
But regardless, it sounds like the only way we're gonna make any of this happen is to get county staff moving in a direction that, that we'd like to see them go.
Do you think keeping them, finding them on those, what they're like?
Well, it's on three, four thousand, I'm sorry. But it's the county right away.
It's...
It's not gonna take, take, take our jurisdiction away, so we have to file Blue Star. That's what they're doing with this Blue River thing. We'll just wash our hands, you guys go out, do whatever you want, take what you agree, you gotta snowplow it, you gotta...
That was a big discussion at the bike, um, meeting too, or the bike trail meeting, was speed limit on Blue Star. Every single person there commented on that, I mean, and you sent me something that was kind of interesting about what if, I, you can explain it.
That's all, I was just thinking of a, uh, you know, sort of trying to fight city health, so to speak, is to, uh, just have a, uh, an area campaign to drive forty-five onto Blue Star and, uh, you know, have a, have some, have some fun with it, have a...
Have bumper stickers made.
Bumper sticker detail, have some signage, uh, you know, uh, you know, that kind of thing. And, uh, uh, I do it. And I do it for kicks, and I get, I see people coming up behind, you know, I just stay on forty-five and I can wait. Get t-shirts.
Except those people pass you on the right.
Oh, yeah, that's...
All that could be cool.
And it's like...
It should be.
I hope that everyone who runs it, but everybody does it, it should be.
And then, but there's gotta be somebody sitting there in order to see them pass you on the right in order to enforce it.
There could, should be signs on that.
Yeah, there could be.
Okay, well, that was a good discussion, Dave, thank you, and, um, I will try to help you. Um, John, would you like to discuss economic development?
I'd love to, thank you.
You're welcome.
Because we've had three meetings now, and what we recently had talked about and decided we should do is, because it's a, it's a big category. So it was, we're holding down, we're looking to get a list, three to five specific issues tied to specific ordinances in language of the master plan, to start funneling the staff. For their initial review and reaction, you know, how long something like this would take to change or alter. Would it be cost involved, is there legal costs, is there any some kind of study? And a few cases where we came up with at the last meeting is, help us clarify some things. So this is where we're at, we're meeting again in two weeks to kind of solidify this, or we might add to it, but again, because this goes back to in the, in the beginning that we talked about the committee, uh, come back with your master list of everything you want done differently or changed, like it'd take two, three years. So we wanna get some traction and get some, absolutely, but the first step, as we all know, with any of the committees, get staff response on, I think, that's just our personal power. Or something to clarification. So this is where we're, where we were at at the meeting a week ago, and like I said, in two weeks, we're gonna own this, maybe add to it, uh, and then share the staff. So, and this is not priority order, this is just where we ended up after an hour and a half. Um, big area relative to economic development is, we need to better understand what our current party ordinances are and, uh, discuss ways to amend them, make them more, especially in terms of businesses that share the same areas. There's been a lot of dispute with daddy oil and road life right now. That's not very distant, Brenda. There was discussion, there seems to be a loophole that grandfather's parcels in that maybe were empty for several years, and now it's a pretty successful big business is and have way too few spaces based on the current orders. Again, that's kind of, next thing, we know that there are Blue Star overlays, so we need to clarify, you know, where are they exactly? And what is that exactly, meaning of zoning, way to do that. Maybe what we have is great, but we need help understanding that better. Now, the next priority, highway interchanges. Both of the highway interchanges, which are the exit, I mean, the entrance and exits to the drive community area, they're both in the township. So we wanna find out, does the township own any of that land, or is that all private land? And what can we do to, as Archie Peterson used to say, beautify them, or at least make them more enticing and better signage and branding? That struck a chord. Uh, let's see, oh, so there's an ordinance forty-one oh two. And again, this is kind of, this should be a quick one, I think, for the...
I thought you had three.
Well, I'm almost, with the five, I'm, this isn't the final list, the final standard we're gonna do. But there's language about highway interchange usages, and we wanna make sure we're reading it right. We feel like it's saying that adult-oriented businesses and truck stops are okay, which in both cases, we're like, really? This is the entrance to the community. So we wanna clarify that, anything?
Forty?
Yeah, it's one hundred and...
Forty, forty-one oh two.
I don't even count that, forty-one...
We didn't have a quarter.
I'm probably missing the numbers that go before it.
Maybe one-one oh two or something.
Forty? I only shoot that home.
Okay.
But, anyway, we just found that like, wow, businesses and truck stops. I should've gotten involved in local politics and tried to sound the truck stops. I'm gonna share that.
And that was probably in Lake Town.
Huh?
It was probably, my day over in Lake Town, maybe in...
Close enough. And then this one, and this is sort of a new, an upcoming area, uh, we're wondering if we need ordinances governing, uh, EV stations. That's the future. Right now, we've got three in the township.
Charging stations?
What?
Some are charging.
Okay.
There's three in the township right now of private property. Are they charging, is it business?
Yeah, they charge.
Do they have license? That sounds like a business. And as I said, obviously in the next ten years, the president could skyrocket. We need to, that's right. That's all right. I gave the, should you alert, this, oh. Any, uh, reaction, feedback, questions?
I would like to see how many more you can bring into the community, because I know that there are businesses that are looking for grant opportunities to actually include them.
Yeah, but...
I'm thinking about the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Proactive development.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, that's where we like to get.
And, um, you know, I think, isn't it your Township Insights or whatever, where there's a little area where you can post a question and then you'll get a lot of response? And I, I thought about doing that for parking back when we were looking at the, um, events center, but instead I just called some places to see what their ordinances were about it. And some of them allocate parking according to square footage versus, even for events centers, versus, um, the amount of people that it could hold. And I thought that was an interesting way of looking at it. And everyone I called, you know, I mean, we require far more parking than most of the people I called. And so I was like thinking, oh, my gosh.
Go get back from...
Which is, well, but it is good to know.
Well, I was actually thinking, when you talk about economic development, the more parking we require, the more costly it is to develop.
Yes.
So in my mind, I was thinking you were headed towards, you know, less refine our parking, or set a maximum. A lot of communities are just abolishing minimums.
Yeah, because the, uh...
Just developer, development-driven.
Like, um, maybe a business or a public business, some of those, like, who cares? I mean, if the business decided to establish an operation, it's in their interest to have a totally non-parking. And if there's not enough place to park, then they lose business, but it's just cost nothing anymore. Well, don't forget, two of our committee members are...
Yeah.
Blue Star business owner.
Okay, so they have...
And they've, and they've had a lot of trouble with this.
Yeah, they got a parking problem with, uh...
They've had war with... They've had war with the shared issue.
Like, that's a small thing to figure out based upon in comparison to how much parking you'll not prefer.
So, yeah, so if we didn't have a minimum, uh, Penny Royal would say for our business, we need forty spaces. And so there wouldn't have been the battle even because those, the, the adjacent owners, I think, were trying to say, well, they need, because of their square footage, they need ten more spaces. Therefore, take down ten more trees or that's it.
And then the issue with shared.
Shared parking is the other one.
Came up in response.
Right, right. We're allowing shared parking. I, I, I think our ordinance and most of the older ordinances say you can share parking, but your total required and their total required have to add up to the amount versus if you share it, then you could reduce it by a factor of twenty percent, thirty percent, whatever. So I feel like we, you know, it's kind of a misclassification of a term. It's that, yeah, you're sharing parking, but it's, you're not reducing the quantity of the required. But if we got rid of required parking, then we wouldn't even need that. I'm a big fan of getting rid of the minimum.
I am too. I am too.
I'll send you some articles. There's a ton of articles on it, uh, in Strong Town. Yeah.
But do we turn any of maximum language?
I don't, uh, I'll have to look. We might have maximums. This thing, uh, that's the, that's the other part of it, right? If you don't have a minimum, you still might want to have a maximum. And usually the maximum say you can go over by twenty percent for snow storage or something like that. Because you don't want to see a parking either.
Yeah, exactly.
But then again, why would someone do that? Do they realize how costly it is to maintain concrete? There is a cost.
Damage cost.
But if you don't have the parking, it could kill your business depending on the.
And then it's up to you to put it in or like your lender.
If you can.
Require parking. That's a big one.
And then just non-ordinance related, um, Michael, he and I have talked a lot about this and groups have discussed it. We, you know, we have a, we set a goal for ourselves of conducting an inventory of what businesses actually do exist in the township. They don't only permit some of the township. We don't, we don't know, we don't certain ones that pay a personal property tax on their interior and equipment. Michael had a great idea about, you know, can, can Laura at the state, the licensing.
Laura, yeah.
Can they help us do research? So, but ultimately, we want to go out though in nineteen-two, we want to introduce ourselves. We want the businesses that are here to know planning commission's got this special community. And then eventually do some kind of survey or, are we business, Brent? What should we be doing?
But once we have, once we have a database on what businesses are here, we can help them and then help us. And then there's all kinds of ways to contact them.
Yep.
You know, newsletters, we can have a website or a portal on the website for business owners who want to see news, you know, uh, offer up a free question survey, you know, that kind of thing. And there's all kinds of things to do. We've got to know who to visit here. And then we can also learn from them.
And all that data is necessary in the master plan revision. You know, they did it ten, they did it back in twenty sixteen, so we need to update that. That's where we're at.
That'd be interesting to see if you can get that from Laura because I think there's a lot of people who probably have licenses to do business who are not doing business too here.
They didn't believe me.
That'd be interesting. Okay. Um, so on the next subject is rural character. Daniel and conservation?
Uh, we've changed our standing meeting from that Thursday to the second Friday of the month at, uh, noon. Um, so that's going to be going forward hopefully. Uh, we did meet in August, um, and we had a speaker from, or two speakers from the ODC, um, which I think was interesting for the group and kind of give us an opportunity to discuss, um, the nature of being rural and more abstract wave. Um, but we did get some information from, uh, Dave from the ODC who sits on the Hudsonville Planning Commission. Um, and he did discuss, you know, some of the intersections between the activities on the ODC and his, uh, role on the Hudsonville Planning Commission. Um, and he brought up some interesting ideas of just, you know, dealing with stormwater, um, more kind of detail about what he discussed with us when we visited the ODC. So that's kind of something on our radar. Um, what we did was, um, we created these, um, kind of like four major categories. Um, and I felt kind of covered all of our interests. Um, so one of them is conservation and development, um, agricultural preservation, special environments, and then tree preservation. So what I'm doing is I'm organizing all of our kind of actionable ideas under each of the headings. So at least it's organized and moving forward. Um, I'm still collecting ideas from other members. Um, and then I was hoping next meeting we'd talk about some sort of prioritization. Because I know, you know, agricultural preservation is coming up, we're talking about that, but everyone seems pretty driven towards tree preservation and creating a tree ordinance. That seems to be at least like from the general feeling, that's what everybody's priority is. Um, so I did want to have one more meeting where we discuss prioritizing some things because I feel like we still, I really want to nail that down so we're all comfortable moving forward. But then I would like to bring you and Lene to some future meeting to kind of give us a twist of reality in terms of like maybe what we should be pursuing, um, given our list of, you know, actionable items that we're just kind of throwing out everything that we might want to do and then, you know, what is realistic, what is not realistic.
And you know, we do have a tree ordinance right now.
Yeah.
Hopefully they've seen that and, and then they can recognize that it's pretty.
Sad.
Probably have.
Yeah. And I want to contact Tracy, um, Shatros in Douglas, um, is working on revamping the Douglas tree. So I do want to reach out to her. I feel like now is an appropriate time just to see.
And park couches.
Maybe they need a park, that's a sample.
Park couches.
Yeah, maybe park. I would like to see what Douglas is doing too, though. Yeah, I have, um, I think I have on the teams, I have, I'm trying to think where. Beth Dior shared something with me from, I think it's from California, maybe.
For trees?
For trees. I think Park Town, uh, or, yeah, I think Park Town Township.
Park Township.
Park Township might be on teams. Yeah, north of Holland. Um, but yeah, there's some tree ordinance materials on teams, but, um, yeah, at this point, I'm just kind of generating actionable, possible actionable items. And it seems like people are most interested in tree ordinances. I'm still working on the historic district recommendation. Um, there's a lot and I just need to create a report that just details everything so the board knows how to proceed. I did have some questions for you about that, like, um, you know, what would my recommendation to the board be? And how does the planning commission kind of figure into that? Like, is it something that the board moves on without us? Or is it something that the board then recommends to us to make a recommendation to them that they vote on?
Well, the board, sorry, we're, we're waiting for a pro, uh, analysis.
So in that pro con, would I give a recommendation to the board about how to proceed?
You could. You don't have to.
Okay.
It could just be.
Yeah.
Detail and timing costs.
Yeah.
Maybe the PC would want Mike wanting in or, or make it keep it neutral.
Right, I don't, yeah.
Because just in the side, I, I was tracking, it was the planning commission or the board where Mark Rodman spoke to us about the ins and outs of historic district. At the time, he was head of the Michigan Historic Preservation Network. He assisted, big promotion, governor appointed him. He's the head of the state historic preservation office.
Oh, wow.
But he's also very helpful. I follow a lot of, yeah, both we talk a lot about. But we were getting more and more information. And there are people at the state level willing to help the collective of us, whether it's board, staff, town, PC or special community. It's a big process. But Daniel's been doing, I think, great because he's brought into that aspect that, you know, it started with, should it, should there be historic district at the Kalamazoo River? But it could be out of Old Alleghen Road, it could be along the whole Kalamazoo, the whole Greenway. And we endorse the Kalamazoo River Greenway Plan, Greening Board. There's a lot to.
That's true.
Historic.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah. The, the report that was produced for the mouth of the Kalamazoo River is somewhat misleading because that the, um, Gun Lake Tribe considers the whole extent of the Kalamazoo River through the township, traditional cultural property and the mouth, as opposed to what we consider to be the mouth.
Right.
So technically, the entire marsh, um, east of I ninety-six is all traditional cultural property and is all documented in this report. So the idea is, I mean, that could be our one big historic district, um, and that, that would really be a great connector with the outdoor discovery centers and this, you know, Kalamazoo, lower Kalamazoo River Greenway Plan. Um, so that's kind of the idea. And I mean, to me, like, it's almost like, you don't see it all the time in the marsh, but it could almost be like rivaling a second state park. I mean, there's a lot of opportunity there if you could declare a historic district. I mean, you could open up more recreational access. Um, you could get monies for dealing with invasive species, you know, replanting things. Um, so I think it's a kind of a cool opportunity for the township. And I think it redefines us, like, we too have this big natural, beautiful resource. And it just kind of redirects your attention from, I don't know, other things in the township to the Kalamazoo River and the marshland.
So, um, one day I actually went for a, we went all the way to New Richmond Bridge.
Yeah.
You know, up the river. And I think a large portion of that is owned or controlled by the Potawatomi Gun Club, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I, just because I saw signs.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, you know, fairly regularly, uh, they were, you know, stated Potawatomi Gun Club. But it, it is beautiful area.
Yeah.
Dave, do you know if, if that's just the name that's used by whoever owns the club and the land or if there is a connection to the tribe? I've always thought it was just the name, good question.
Yeah, I don't know.
We should find out.
Yeah, you know, you know, we would.
If there's a tribe and connection, that's a whole.
Dave Ingle.
Well, that's, because he runs that club.
Yeah. Dave Ingle would know. But my understanding is the gun club leases the land from the, they have like a, I don't know, a ninety-nine year lease or whatever, some lease from the, from the Potawatomi Indians.
The club way, the tribe, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of, it's a lot of partners.
Yeah.
Well, you could just go on Alleghen County GIL's parcel, be aware, click those parcels and see who the owner is.
Apparently John Vanderby.
That doesn't answer the, is it connected to the actual tribal group?
Oh, I would think the tribe would own the land, but maybe not.
Potawatomi Ridge is just a housing, you know.
No, of course.
I'm just coming up with words.
I know John Vanderby could go on Alleghen County Parcel Hunter because he wanted, or finder, because he want, or viewer, rather, because he wanted to find out who the owner was and he went round and round in circles and couldn't figure it out. Yeah.
We'll find it.
Did you say your meetings are the second Thursday at four?
It's going to be now the second Friday at noon.
To that point, for those that are interested, economic development has changed to the second Tuesday at four.
Oh, second Tuesday at four. Good. All right.
This is the last but not least panel. But today we'll have.
Our meetings are Wednesdays at one o'clock, every Wednesday, uh, every month at one o'clock. Uh, so we do have a meeting on Wednesday. Um, but we set out the draft, uh, made a draft of, uh, ensuring our definitions are appropriate. Um, we're looking at a couple, uh, ordinances in regards to minimum, uh, dwelling size, uh, possibly creating another overlay district, even though I think that creates some problems, but, you know, we can have that discussion. So, um, I looked at what the, uh, township board regards to priorities and the only, um, area that I think we're missing in the, in the discussion is senior housing. We haven't even touched senior housing. So, uh, there is a draft out and I do have it on Teams. Um, so Lene, if you have access to Teams, it's under shared documents. And it is just a draft. So that's, uh, and throughout all our discussions, is that's going to be our, what we'll discuss on Wednesday is, uh, what our recommendations are and, you know, what have we missed? What do you need to include? And then, uh, our goal is to complete our work by November.
Sure, we will too.
We're close. So, uh, yeah, John and, uh.
Michael.
Uh, Daniel and whoever, uh, it's all on Teams. So if you want to look at that draft, under shared documents. It's there. Our minutes are there and, and agenda.
Um, the one thing I wanted to say about housing is Mike, who is here with us, they originally wanted to have a house and a business on the same property and industrial. But we don't allow residential and industrial. So. And we would never, I don't, I don't. I don't think that's really nice, but. Uh, live, work or whatever, but yeah.
Hard to look at that.
Yeah.
Hardly an industrial area.
It also doesn't have utilities. Yeah, it's, it, it creates a lot of challenges.
Yeah, 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 there is, yeah.
There's a lot of challenges with that.
When the residential way across from industrial, they do.
Yeah, and there's a lot of, yeah. All right.
Well, thank you, everyone. Um, now, next to our agenda is the township board update.
All right. Sorry, guys.
Oh, that's great.
Township board met on August eleventh. That one was in person. So we had public comment from the county mental health director, really about ARPA funding, which is the American Rescue Plan money. We're going to get three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. We're getting digits even from the county, like. Ditch in here, contribute to our broadband effort, contribute to the new mental health clinic. So that's why you. And then Commissioner Cappiano, or Cappiano, he comes every two or three months, mostly to give updates. And he was praising Chief Janik's work during COVID and other things. And he gave an update on the county animal shelter. Commented some people on Zoom, uh, on recycling. Then we had a, um, we had a, board had a public hearing. This is the special assessment district for sixty-sixth street, otherwise known as all the manor properties around the pond. So, um, I guess that was the public hearing on, uh, charging those properties, the tax assessment. Pay for getting wider. Matt Chafry gave an update on branding proposal he had sort of like RFP for. And, uh, that was passed three to two of our few non-didacter votes, but we're moving forward with this branding proposal. Uh, then we had the appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission and we have two new members, Jane Dickey and Kenneth Butler, who's a relative newcomer to the area, but has had lots of experience on, um, township tours and, um, other partnerships. But lives here now. Um, Kalamazoo Lake Harbor Authority, we're finally in. We posted two voting members and we had one out. And, uh, he got appointed. That's a gentleman, many of you know, take classes. Um, we posted again because we have two. I think I've been better at recruiting for that, for the Harbor Authority. the Harbor Authority, like that. Rotary Club came and requested, uh, that township contribute funds for the September Pat Fire Works, the city's law, and that was passed. And we accepted a contract for our new building inspector, Eric Davis, who, I think it's two weeks, Al Alexson, who's been our building inspector for about forty years, who's officially retired and Eric is replacing him. Um, we also, we accepted a proposal from Manager Frye for a full-time community development slash assessing coordinator, which is basically a promotion for our current admin assistant, Jennifer Drew, to go full-time five days a week. And no one's more excited about that than me. We have, we have coverage issues here in the office. Uh, so that got passed. So then we went there. Then we actually had the vote on the sixty-sixth street special assessments of the manor property. Uh, it did pass five nothing. I just want to share with you guys because I was kind of adamant with our council and we do know the master plan is very explicit. If a developer needs water extended to them, the additional water and sewage, it's their expense, it's their responsibility. And we thought the president and our attorney said, well, in a sense, he is paying for it because he owns all properties. Both checked, but two or three have sold, but they're mostly his. And I said, that doesn't indicate we're close to covering your costs, Nick. And I mean, there's a lot of extra costs, it's not just the state, but it's, it's a done deal. Uh, we had further discussion on COVID nineteen protocols for the office. As you know, we're kind of going backwards because the country's not going anywhere forward. And, um, we've had some issues about unvaccinated staff and requiring them to test and, and things are getting rolled out. We're wearing masks in the office and we'll get the number of people from the public that can be hit at any one time. I've been working from home primarily because of the vaccination issue and, um, until I'm assured that Eric has been vaccinated. Good as it's taxed that I can do most of that at home. And I can do it faster if I don't get interrupted. And that's, I'm, I'm willing to change when we're done, everyone uncovered. Uh, let's see. Then we, uh, we had asked the month before for, um, manager and legal counsel to draft a response to the Army Corps of Engineers, which had asked if we wanted to bring in on the proposed alternative to Marina Plan that had been presented from another property by the council. I, um, let us draft it and review and discuss and we voted to send that one to the Army Corps. That was three to two to, not only in hours. We adopted the Michigan Township Association's principles of governance, hanging in the wall in front and we all signed onto that. And then we, uh, discussed the opening of the planning commission to the new ship's resignation, T B A and Harbor Authority, because we had to get everything posted, hopefully to further fill these spots in, uh, September. We had another meeting, technically a committee of the whole meeting, which cities like three was a workshop, but townships can't have workshops. So this is when the board meets, it's open to the public, there's an agenda, but no, there's no voting, there's no action. There's discussion items and, um, the main discussion was reviewing a draft long-term capital improvement plan. This is something required by the state that this township's never done. Penalty, but we've really had a capital improvement. And this is super long-term, ten, fifteen, twenty years. But, uh, Joe's done a great job in getting this started. A lot of discussion on that. We reviewed, uh, the current proposals for upgrading this existing space. Just inside, I just heard the sweep. All the furniture in here, maybe not those chairs, but everything up front was purchased in nineteen eighty-two. When Tagatuck Township included the city of Tagatuck and the village Douglas, it was all one township and they moved into their office in downtown Douglas on Seventh Street, right where Brackett and Company and, and Bohemian Shop. That was the township office. And then ten years later, in ninety-two, I guess, I think the city had already broken off and the village of Douglas, before it was a city, they broke away from the township. That's when the township government moved into this building and they brought all that old, it was already tenured, but they brought all that with them. It's falling apart. It's not ergonomic, dangerous, small route. So anyway, I'm excited about that. That may be where some of the, uh, rescue claim money is. And then we're all talking about some of our strategic action. As I said, discussion only, it was a great thing to do. No actions were taken because that's the nature of the meeting. And we also had a separate, uh, with the closed session because we were, we're late in giving Joe his six-month review and we finally took care of that.
Um, John, we're moving towards, uh, with the, the virtual decision is six-month increments, is my understanding, right?
Oh, on the meetings?
Yeah, right, so.
I get, yeah, and again, they can, they can be changed.
They can be changed, but the, the, because we schedule public hearings and whatnot, we do need to know what's the lead type of-
And that's why we beforehand the vote to say-
So be a method today.
Because the hearings can stay in.
But we are going to be virtual, probably, uh, maybe, maybe for less than six months, but there's six-
Hopefully not. We also though, and Mike had some new suggestions and I hope, I hope that helps push Joe, but we can't do hybrid meetings.
No, we can't.
But if we could, then we could be the commissioners and the board members and the public in common. But right now, you know, we've had like one or two guests on the screen, but even then usually one party can't do it.
Yeah, but we're going to have, uh, a new Zoom account too that Joe has.
Uh, he goes, did everyone get that?
No, I don't.
The chairs? I mean, they went to all the three chairs I think this morning.
Oh, okay.
Because our special committees are all on Zoom. Had the last week.
Oh.
Sorry. Our next board meeting, we kept her next, September eighth. Oh, and we moved our board meetings now near the, the, yeah, six. Yeah, Lake Commish, never mind. We, not the board. Yeah, we're still at six, sorry. Ron, Ron Ford's the board.
Hi, uh, committee, yeah, did I think of the wrong one?
Hi, is there, um, is that it, John?
That's it. Thank you for-
That was a lot of good information. Thank you. Um, is there any other staff updates from, depending on, well, it was filling up the C U R and personnel.
I lied. One real quick, man.
Okay.
I ran the fire board. So-
For the rest.
Michigan Association of Plankets. These will be two or three of us are due paying members, but we can get a group membership. Like, it's not a huge discount, but it's discounted. Uh, it would cover all plank commissioners as well as all board members. So I'm moving forward.
I think we should.
I, you're, you, you're a member.
I'm a member and that conference is in October.
I know. Now, in October, several, I think it's two in person and the rest of the, and it really, they do a lot of things aimed at board members.
Yeah, they do a lot.
I wonder if they have a better idea. I did their master planning board.
Yeah.
Township will pay this and we'll, we'll pay for the trainings.
Yeah.
So with my good information about it, I will forward it to you too, Mark Downlow.
You have to pay to be.
I don't think I'm a member either. I'm not a member, I am.
No, I'm a member.
You are.
I don't think I am. I don't get anything.
Everyone's going to be on Zoom now, including the new person.
Perfect, that's wonderful. All right. Uh, any other business? Thank you all for your time this evening and, uh, for making really good decisions. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Almost.
And then he's placed supporting that.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.